On June 2, 2008 to order. The agenda will be the following this evening. Visitors, approval of meeting, Borough School Playground Committee, Academic All-Star Program, Announcement of Taylor Principal, Foxborough High School Guidance Update, Monthly Budget Update, Textbook Adoptions, District Improvement Plan Update, Bid Awards, Other Matters. At that time, I will call for a roll call to go into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of collective bargaining strategies, after which we will not return to open session. Do we have any visitors present? Good evening.
Angel Bayon, 153 North Street.
Are we reading a statement?
I have a prepared yes.
Do you have a copy for the committee?
No, but can I be made a copy of that?
Just read it.
Okay. First, baby, I want to congratulate you on becoming the chair. I have enjoyed your friendship for a number of years and I respected always your integrity and how you conduct yourself, even when we had conversations that were controversial. You were very neutral and I respect that. And I'm here to reaffirm my personal commitment to do whatever is needed to enhance the schools, be an active member of the public, who will not only come here to congratulate you on a job well done, but also to continue to act as a gut fly that we have recently been called. I do also want to commend Martha that she has exercised her right to address the selectmen and expressed her personal frustrations about the problems her daughter has encountered with the dog park issue. I am sure that she did not have any concerns over being labeled negative. She probably did not have any reservations to be attacked by someone that came totally unexpected with personal attacks and with mean spirited comments directed to elected officials. She even quoted the open meeting law, which she chose to ignore a couple of times for being the chair. I just wonder if she realized that she has exercised the same right for which the whole committee has just dyes in a veal's name. I know that she will never recognize the slander in campaign she allowed to happen while chairing the policy review subcommittee, nor will she realize how fortunate she was that she was not addressing this committee. As a reminder to all, a gut fly, as the Marion Webb's dictionary has described us, "A person who stimulates or annoys, especially by persistent criticism." I did not mind being called by this name, as I have looked to stimulate the personal responsibility and the ownership of the words that we all say, but I also understand that those that have demanded that they speak the truth may have been annoyed by my persistence. I only wish that when I was a child, we had this misspeak word used more openly, because I think I would have been grounded a lot less when I was a kid. My mother was also very tough. I appreciate the time and I commend all of you for the job we've done last year and I know that you will do a fantastic job this year. And if at any point I criticize any one of you, please believe the criticize comes to the actions of the individual, not the individual itself, or the actions of the committee, from my perspective. And I will have no problem to accept when I'm wrong and apologize if I'm wrong. In the meantime, my good wishes to all of you for a fantastic year. Thank you.
Would you please leave that with Wendy?
Certainly.
Thank you. Other, any other visitors?
Hi, I'm Wendy Nelson, 12 Algea Road, and I'm actually a Foxborough Public School alumni myself. I graduated in the class of 1989, so I've always been a advocate of public schools until recently. My, I have three kids, not ages nine, seven, and five, in the school system now, well, in third, first, and entering kindergarten next year. And I am here to advocate on the return of the gifted and talented program to the public, Foxborough Public Schools. I feel like with the no child left behind and the teaching toward the MCAS, our schools have really suffered and because of that, a lot of the higher end kids are being, the ones being left behind. A lot of them are leaving the public schools and including my own. I've already had to pull my oldest out. She's now thriving at Sage, but there was a real need for her to leave and I've got two more kids coming and it's very expensive. So I have a two-pronged effort here. My first is, is the return of some sort of gifted and talented program to the Foxborough Public Schools. And the second is the equity of, of paying for all the children on the lower end that need resources. If a school system cannot accommodate a child within the school system, you pay for them to go outside the school system. And with individuals' test scores like my daughter's, I'm wondering why can't she be budgeted into the town as well as those 31 other kids that go out of system? Dr. Martis has seen my daughter's test scores and I'm happy to share them with anybody, but it just seems like with the whole no child left behind, the kids at the top are the ones being left behind and we're having to pay for that ourselves. So I have a real issue with the equity of the Massachusetts school systems. Any questions? That's what I'm, yes.
Not really a question, Wendy. Mentioned that we did meet and I think it's, I think it's an interesting issue. I think it's something that as a committee, as we think about setting goals and we look at program issues that come up and we've, we've had some discussion, although not a long discussion, about gifted and talented, looking at the, at the range of programs that, that some systems are still able to provide, but not many. And the other issue is, is a little bit more complex around students and, and who participates in our system and how do they, how are they, how do we make a determination that we cannot provide an education within the public schools and that we look at other placements? So that's a little bit more complex as we discussed that
Absolutely.
That it may actually end up being more of a legislative route than a, than a town policy or a school district policy, at least from, from my perspective. But I think you raised very important issues and concerns that I think as a, as a committee and a community, we can certainly make into.
I think more and more of the, of the top students are leaving the school system and that's very sad. When I went through the school system, it was excellent and the top student stayed and I'd like to see it that way for our children.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Wendy, could I just ask you a question? What's the tuition at Sage these days?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
Okay. And obviously you may know that Dr. Martis has been working with the governor and the legislature, because the amount of funding that we lose to the charter school is far greater per student than we pay for students here at our schools.
I know.
And so he's working on reforming how the dollars get allocated across the state, which if he were to be successful would give us some flexibility to do the kinds of programs that you advocate for and that we as a committee have advocated for. The difficult part obviously is there is only so many dollars and we're mandated by law with special education requirements. We're not mandated by law and so when you have so many dollars and you run out, those are the kinds of programs that suffer. But if we can go to the legislature as Chris is doing now and leading that task force to get some sanity in how they fund things, it would provide a lot more financial flexibility to allow us to do some of the things that you've advocated for as well as others.
Right, and we did discuss the charter school. I do understand that as a, as a different issue, but I, I guess I have a problem with you. The bell curves here and if kids meet certain criteria, being certain, on the low end, a certain distance, we accommodate them by various programs, first of all, within the system and if not, within then without. If they're way down that end on the other side, it's considered a special need. My, you know, my daughter's special needs, but just on that end, so why don't they do anything to accommodate that? And, and that's where I have a problem, obviously financially too.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
All right, I think if I may, you have made a great point. Wendy, if I could just, thank you for coming forward and I'd like to ask you to keep coming forward. I think all of us, as Dr. Martis has said, in fact, it was on our goals, to the extent that we would like to weigh in as much as we'd like, we're not where we want to be. So by you coming forward and by you continuing to come forward, I think that, that helps keep it in all of our minds, because I think, I can speak for all of us since we've talked about it, we do care about this issue and wanna, and wanna keep moving toward something. So, thank you.
So what should my next step be?
I'd come back again. When do we, when, we're gonna be looking at our goal, goals.
Goals. I would also write our state representative, I would write our state legis, the state senator, I would write the governor, and I would try to be advocating at, at the legislative level as well, because we do get funding from the state for our special education needs. There is no funding at the other end of the spectrum, at the bell curve as you described. So I think that while we're trying to work the issue locally, it would certainly help us if you and other parents would help work the legislature as well and build the pressure at that end.
Wendy, I think one of the, probably one of the biggest pitfalls that we have in public education now is because of MCAS and what we have to do with remediation that, you know, it's like when we get to the high school and we have AP classes and, and we have a policy in place that says, under so many, we can't hold that class or we have to make a decision on it. I think it's the same thing when it comes to this type of thing. When you have a class of 30 kids that you have to accommodate for remediation, or if you have to have a class of only two or three for an AP class, then unfortunately, we're gonna have to look towards the 30. So there's always gonna be that disparity. And, and I, we've always had students leave the system for one reason or another, and I think when they get to a junior high or a high school program and we're not, they wanna go to another school, I think Foxborough should take a lot of pride in the fact that we help prepare those students so that they can get into these special schools. So I, we're trying to meet the needs of as many children as we have, but as you can tell, the budget is gonna get tighter and tighter. And it's, and it's not because we want to slight one over another, we don't. We wanna do the best we can for every child within this system. But unfortunately, because of the no child left behind, we are stuck trying to do remediation and trying to make sure that we have as many students, if not all, pass MCAS. So you have to understand that we have so many budget restraints. This isn't a pick and choose, it, we're mandated to do a lot of things.
Right, I understand that.
It doesn't mean we're not considering, and this isn't a priority, it is.
Right, but unfortunately with the teaching towards the MCAS, there's no incentive to bring the ceiling any higher, there's just a incentive to bring the lower up to meet the rest of the class.
No, not necessarily, because we're always trying to move a, a different area up. We don't wanna just settle for moderate, we're always trying to move up to proficient and into the next category. So it's not just that we're trying to move the low end, we're trying to move everybody. So we are trying.
Yeah, but I think the kids at the tippity top are just bored, unfortunately.
Wendy, if I could just weigh in too.
Sure.
I certainly, again, wanna thank you for coming forward. One of the things that we did last year was we had the math specialists and we brought them into the elementary and the middle school, hoping again that that would be a way, not only to help those students that needed remediation, but also, like you're describing, help those students that needed more challenging material. So it's, it may not be enough, you know, from what you're saying.
It was only offered, it was only offered 20 minutes for her per six day cycle, the rest of the time she was going to have to work by herself. And I didn't think that was adequate at the elementary school age. It's a rather lonely elementary experience.
Right, and that one specialist is serving three elementary schools, so absolutely. But I think it's something that again, as we start to understand how effective those specialists are at the elementary level, we can, you know, we can get feedback, we can find out if we need to, you know, add more. I mean, it's all these little pieces. And the other piece too is as Larry was talking about funding, special education transportation is another area that Dr. Martis is working on with legislators to try to get more funding for that, because again, that's part of our budget. And if, if all these kind of pieces fall into place, then again, we'll have more money to generate in, in the budget for, for other areas that, you know, that we wanna spend on. So, you know, I do appreciate what, what your concerns are and I think again, as a group, we're trying to address that. But again, maybe not as quickly for you as we want, but we'll, again, we have our school committee goals, hopefully we'll be reviewing soon, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other visitors?
Judy Harrington, 39 Shoreline Drive. I just wanted to take a second to thank this committee for everything you have done in the last couple of years. We have made such breakthroughs in the school department and I hope you will continue to ignore the insignificance and the comments, negative comments that are constantly made that plague the school committee and the school district, does nothing to add value to anybody or anybody, or anything going on here. I just wanna personally thank you for everything you've done and continue it and I see many, many great years ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors? All right, do we have any additions or corrections to be made on our minutes from the last meeting of May 19?
Yeah, I have, if I, Wendy, I'm sure I said it this way, 'cause you're always so accurate, but then I said it incorrectly. It says, thanking Chief O'Leary for the program on alcohol and drug awareness. It should be, it should read
Where are we, top, bottom?
Page four, I'm sorry, at the bottom.
Thank you.
I apologize. Ms. Kaminsky thanked Chief Ed O'Leary and the high school staff for their efforts on A-N-A-D-D, Alcohol Drug Awareness Program, paid for by the Foxborough Police Department. I know, I'm sure I said it the other way, but. And the other on page, the first page at the very, very bottom, referring to the, I would like the record to reflect that I just asked that we reviewed rotation, 'cause we've talked about it. So I would like the sentence to, to read to reflect that. It says, Mr. Harrington opened the floor for nominations for the position of chairman. Mrs. Kaminsky asked if committee members would discuss the possibility of rotating the position of chair and committee members declined, so discussion continued with the nomination, and discussion continued with the nomination process. Should I read that again?
Yeah, read it please.
Okay. Mrs. Kaminsky asked if committee members would discuss the possibility of rotating the position of chair, period. I probably should've said that. Committee members declined a discussion and continued with, we continued with the nomination process.
Kate, didn't you actually say similar to the selectmen based on seniority?
Yes, I don't wanna, yeah, I did, but I didn't wanna put that
I just wanna make sure we all understand what you were trying to do.
Yeah, I did say, as with other boards, but I don't wanna sound petty, it's, 'cause it's not, I just wanted to reflect that we chose not to do it that way.
Well, we did rotate the chair, so to me it was confusing the way it was worded, but we did rotate. So it didn't, you couldn't tell from, from what's here. It raised the question, Katie would like to discuss the idea of rotation or continue with the nomination process. And I just don't think it's clear what you were trying to say. And it wasn't like that the committee declined because we did vote to rotate the chair. So, you know, we oughta just try to make it clear what you were trying to say.
We, for clarity, it's how we were going to rotate the chair. We had discussions that would be based on your term, as, similar to other boards, but we've never, we haven't discussed that in two years, so that's what, I just asked
How we would rotate with
Right, the how we would rotate. So if you would prefer to say, Mrs. Kaminsky asked if committee, committee members would discuss
Would like to discuss. Would like to discuss.
Whatever. The possibility, we can wordsmith it, but I think Larry, you just said it very clearly, so I think that that's how the record should reflect it.
I think I need that one.
Yeah.
Wendy needs that one.
I'll write it up and give it to you.
Are there any other additions or corrections?
Make a motion as amended for example.
Martha has made a motion. Katie has seconded. All in favor as amended? Any opposed? Five zero zero. Okay, the Borough School Playground Committee.
Let me start this one and invite Michelle McCarthy, principal of the Borough School, to come up and she is going to introduce other people who've been putting in a lot of time and effort to take a look at the Borough School, the whole playground structure kind of across the whole school. So, Michelle, thank you for coming tonight.
Before our presentation, I just wanted to know, over the past year, I've been working with the PTO, the Borough School Playground Committee is one of the most dedicated groups I've had a chance to work with and they have planned extensively, not only on improvements for the playgrounds at the Borough School, but also on raising funds to support those plans. So again, before I bring up the people who are presenting tonight, I just wanted to acknowledge the Playground Committee as a whole, the chairperson Kathy Rangioni, and members Susan Phillips, Karen Conley, Debbie Ford, Melissa Block, and Kevin Brady. I'd also like to note that just very recently, our school council has started to join in in that planning and as part of our school improvement plan, we'll continue working with that group into next year. So the, the people presenting tonight are Kathy Rangioni and Karen Conley and I'd like to invite them up now to show you what they've been working on.
Do you have copies for your meetings too?
Yes. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Kathy Rangioni, this is Karen Conley, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to share with you some of the work that we've been doing. What I'd like to do just is to start off with some of our main messages, kinda to give you an overview of what we're gonna share with you tonight briefly. If you take a look at page two, our school play areas, like the Igo and the Taylor, are used on a regular basis by hundreds of kids on a daily basis when school's in session, as well as hundreds more between baseball and soccer and some of the events that go on. In addition to that, the structures that are currently on our grounds, and we have several, are ranging both age and quality. We have just one or two items that are about five years old and then we have several who, majority of the rest are more than 15 years old. The Borough PTO saw an opportunity quite a while ago in talking with parents and others who had taken on the role of looking at the structures that we had. And our approach had been to purchase, save up, you know, raise money, save it up to buy a particular piece and then put it on the playground. As a result, what's happened is that we have a very kind of not cohesive look and feel to our playground. We saw an opportunity about a year ago and I was approached by our PTO president, asking me to, to consider taking on a committee, partially because I had a lot to say when I was on the board several years ago about the playground and that we should take a more strategic view of how we look at it. So I now have to stand and rise to the challenge. So, we saw an opportunity to create a more cohesive, safe, and usable play areas for the kids, not just the kids in the school, but also the larger community. Our playground currently does not have any glaring safety issues, however, we feel as if taking a more strategic look and approach and, and focus to it will suit us well in the future to be able to respond to it when we do have to replace equipment. So our Playground Committee has been working to create a long-term phased plan to capitalize on the opportunity that we see. We feel that if we do this, the results that we will achieve will be play areas that provide both the community and the school a valuable resource, not only for exercise, but learning as well as creative play. So just briefly, a little bit about our approach. As Michelle mentioned, last year we assembled the Playground Committee, she talked about the folks that were involved in that. We did what we, what I call a current situation assessment, took a look at what we had, what we were faced with, how things were utilized. We then worked to establish a five-year vision and goals, which we did just last fall. We then sourced and received proposals for a number of landscape architects to help us create a comprehensive master plan that we could then implement over the course of time. We realized that it was incredibly important and regardless, we were going to have to raise funds, so we started to do that and we have had some goals and strategies this year that have been in place. And then right now, all of what you see there has been done, the next phase for us, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, is to develop an implementation plan based on the master plan with phased execution and fundraising strategy to support that over the next several years. Michelle has pretty much already covered this off, but we formed our committee last year, we've got six parents working on that, and as Michelle said, we have begun working more closely with the school council in concert with the school improvement plan. So let's talk briefly, just a little bit about where, what we did from a situation assessment standpoint and where we're at. Last fall, we assessed our existing structures and landscape to, to understand and determine utilization. We talked to Michelle about what were some of the things that she saw as opportunities. We also met with Mike O'Leary a couple of times where he helped to walk the ground with us and understand if we had any compliances, issues, any insurance issues, and understand how frequently that process took place, so that we were educated on what to expect and what we might be facing, short-term as well as long-term. He was a great resource. We also engaged him to understand a little bit about the maintenance requirements and the support that we receive and any concerns he might have about the work that we would consider doing. So he shared his input. We also kind of assessed and had some dialogue and conversation with him about some of the challenges we had around drainage issues in the school playground, where we have a lot of areas where kids open play, have open play, that are really unusual, unusable for much of the year due to rain and just how the water drains and things like that. He also did share with us some of the maintenance that's been done over the last several years on our largest structure on the playground, which is our, also our oldest structure. We've got kind of a mandated approach, which has been fine, but at some point in the short-term future, we're gonna have to address that in a more significant way. All the while, we recognize that because this is a long-term plan, we need to continue to maintain what we have. And we've made a commitment to do that and have received a lot of support, not only from the Eagle Scouts, but also Inventus has supported us. Last fall, they restained the large structure that we have and did some work on it to make it a little bit more appealing as well as safer. So that's really where we did the, assessed everything we could, understanding what we are, what we, we had and what we were considering to do. And then we worked with our Playground Committee as well as the larger community through PTO, the teachers, school council members, to establish our vision, which is to establish and maintain play areas, play areas for the Borough School Community that provide the opportunity for fitness and creative play for every child. The way we kind of measure that and look at that is we've established six goals. The goals for our play, play area are first, that it is safe, clean, fun, and easily maintained. That it meets the needs of students, teachers, and the community. And what we mean specifically by that is that we create the opportunity for children to enjoy it, but also create the opportunity for teachers to leverage the environment outside to support the learning process. Our, the goal is to help be sure that it contributes to the health and fitness of the children. We specifically put this in because we, we like to be sure that whatever we create is something that could also be used to enhance the wellness curriculum through fitness work. And you'll see, we have a sample plan here, you'll see where we've tried to work some of that in. We worked closely, we've had some dialogue with Coach Manis around that. We'd also like it to be sure that it's inviting and visually appealing to all, which was something that many parents reflected in conversations, more so than equipment at times. Some of them felt strongly that it's just not all that aesthetically pretty. That it's fully utilized, meaning that all of the equipment that we use, we have and the features of the playground are used as much as possible, and that it allows for future expansion as the needs of the school and the needs of the community grow and change. Having said that, the first thing we started to work on was we created a master plan. We began the process of creating a master plan. And what we mean by that is we wanted to have a blueprint of what we'd like the end state of the playground to be, so we had something to work towards, which is something we hadn't had, haven't had before. As I said earlier, we solicited input from parents, teachers, the early childhood coordinator. Once we found out that the preschool would be shifting over to the Borough School, we engaged in conversations with Michelle about the implications of that and the impacts of it. And most recently, met with Diana Parr and engaged her in the process of providing input to the plans that we've worked on with the Landscape Architect. We also worked again with Mike O'Leary and we engaged with several landscape, landscapers within the Foxborough community who were willing to come around and share their insights and perspective, most notably Chris Mitchell from, from his landscaping company. We then sought input and proposals from a number of different landscape architect firms and contracted the services of Gates, Layton, and Associates based out of East Providence, Rhode Island, who works in partnership with O'Brien &amp; Sons, which is a playground structures company. And we designed a, two different concept plans, met with our school council, Diana Parr, Michelle, and our Playground Committee, made revisions to that. And what we have tonight for you to show you is the version one of our master plan. It's very difficult to see and perhaps not the right environment to go through all the details of this, but essentially at the Borough, we have two distinct play areas. One, which you see on the Essentially, what you see on the plan is, our other goal is to be sure that we leverage the existing equipment and work around what we have, create a space that we could eventually add on to or replace very easily, but also add additional things. So, you heard me speak earlier about the fitness level, you'll notice that there are some trails and things that come out from around that would enable us to use that as part of the wellness and perhaps relocate some of the equipment we have surrounding that to provide almost a station feel without, that could be leveraged. On the third and fourth grade side, we've introduced the concept of perhaps an amphitheater, almost like an outdoor small theater that we would cut into the hill that actually exists currently, that would allow for classroom performances. The standing water, which we all found brilliant from the Landscape Architect Company, they turned it into a rain garden versus a standing puddle that destroys our children's clothing. But the principle is it wouldn't create any danger to the children, but just be, create an area where it might support some of the science work and things like that. So, as I said earlier, the look and feel of the play areas change only in the sense that we may continue to leverage what we have, work around it, as well as perhaps reposition, relocate things, and then eventually replace and create the opportunity to do that. So, where we're at now is this version of the master plan will go through another iteration of our playground committee, school council, working with all the appropriate people, and will then result in revisions and a final master plan. So, that's where we are with our master planning process. We spoke earlier about our fundraising approach and strategy this year. Our goal this year was we recognized inevitably we were going to have to raise funds. We didn't know exactly how much, because we were in the process of designing the master plan as well, but we knew that we wanted to create this master plan, so we wanted to raise monies to be able to cover the expenses associated with that, as well as kickstart our efforts towards the longer-term goals that we are going to need to accomplish. We started out this year with funds of about thirty-three hundred dollars, which we carried over from previous years. We've separated that money and put it into short-term money market funds, et cetera, where we can earn the highest rate of interest, because we're not looking to get into that. So, we've restructured our approach to those funds. We also this year made a conscious choice to allocate our, one of our largest fundraisers, Yankee Candle, to playground this year, and that raised about twenty-six hundred dollars for us. In addition, Coach McManus approached us during the course of the year and threw out an idea of hosting birthday parties at the school after school hours, and he would basically split the cost of the birthday party with us, and we would, that money went, has gone specifically for playground as well. We also launched earlier this year a fundraising effort where we have created a monopoly-like game or board game entitled Foxboroughopoly, and we've just received the games. We're projecting that this fundraiser is going to earn us about twenty thousand dollars. To date, we've raised twelve thousand dollars, and we did this by selling the advertising spaces on the locations on the board to local businesses. So, we're in the process of selling those right now, and again, we project that they will be about twenty thousand dollars at the end of the day for that particular fundraiser. So, right now, we've raised about twenty-eight thousand dollars for our efforts.
Did you have to preorder those, or can you buy them?
No, you can buy them, you can visit us at booth A4 at Founder's Day, we're going to be selling them. And if you'd like one, we have some. We're always prepared, we have them.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
Judy's Flower Shop, too.
Yes, they're in twelve different retail locations, and if you look, read the reporter this week, you can find out more about where they're available, so. Not that I'm advertising. So, where we are from a next step standpoint, as I said, our goal is in the next week or so to finalize our master plan, which we're presenting at our PTO meeting next week, our NVF PTO meeting, and then from there, once we have the master plan, the support from the Landscape Architect Firm, we'll be establishing a phased implementation plan that will include, excuse me, cost estimates for each of those phases, and then we are going to, in tandem, create our oh-eight, oh-nine fundraising strategies for how we are going to raise these funds. And then, our plan is, in the short-term, because we've got a lot of momentum at the school and in the community for this, is to implement some small changes to capitalize on this momentum and support with perhaps some small, yet significant changes, so when people return to school in the fall, they see that the money that they've been supporting us with the last several months has had an impact, so we'll make some choices about what we do there.
That's a very good idea.
And that's it.
That's it. Mrs. Lattery?
I'm going to go out on a limb here. I, probably since the time I've gotten on this floor, have advocated for the fact that I think the school system itself should be more involved with playground equipment and replacing it, maintaining it, paying for it. It kind of gives me pause for thought, the parents are continually being asked to try and raise this kind of money. One of my main concerns is that this is our town-owned property, and we're responsible for it, and we're liable for it, and, you know, I appreciate everything that you've done and everything you've gone through, but I think we need to take a look within ourselves and realize that this is our property and that we need to maintain it and update it and care for it. And I don't know how other members feel about it, but I know we did jump in on the Taylor School project, because certainly there was a safety issue, but when you're talking about, you know, the health and well-being of students, and when you're talking about after-hours, we have to make sure about our liability and what type of equipment actually goes in here, and whether or not it's what it's supposed to be. So, I think with ownership comes responsibility, and I think we need to, as a committee, take a look at this and make sure that all our playgrounds are safe, up-to-date, renovated, expanded, and meet the needs of all the students within the school system and within the community. So, I think it gives us a little pause for thought as to how we maintain our property and how we keep upgrading it and expanding it and meeting the needs, looking within our rental revolving accounts or whatever, because by the time you try to raise this kind of money, certainly costs go up. I like the idea of you trying to help, and they do help in different areas, but, and I'm only one person on this floor, but I feel very strongly that playgrounds are part of the school system, and somehow, we need to be a little bit more proactive ourselves. Good for that.
Did you have a goal set that you wanted to reach?
Financially?
Financial?
We did not, going into it, because our feeling was, we didn't know exactly what we were talking about, we were, we wanted to be clear about what we were trying to accomplish and then be able to accomplish that goal, which is why we came up with the idea to create a master plan, knowing that we could continue to tackle this in small bites and continue to end up with the same situation we have. So, we did not have an overall number in our minds. That's our next step, is to get that master plan and then say, how much is it going to cost us to implement this, and then build strategy around reaching that goal.
Well, the design you just sold us, that showed us.
Yes.
Did they put a price tag on that?
We're, this is, we're in that process right now, so that's the next step, is once we finalize what we want it to look like, the next step would be to say, how much will this cost us, and then if we need to make modifications, because it's something that we think we can achieve in five years, which is really what we're focusing on for our horizon, or we may, we need to make a conscious choice to say, okay, it's not five years, it's seven years, or it's ten years. So, we don't have a number attached to that right now.
I think if we all take a step back and look at our schools and see what is needed, if we keep adding a little bit and replacing a little bit at a time, then we won't have to have these huge fundraises that are five, seven years out, and in the meantime, you've had a child go through that school and not have, have any access to any of this equipment. I'd rather see us keep adding to what we have and implementing what we have than to constantly be trying to rehab a whole project.
And that's our intention, our intention is to look at what we need, what we have the opportunity to do in the next five to seven years and phase it, addressing the areas that need to be addressed first and then moving through the process. The largest structure that we have on our property is about twenty-plus years old. It's wooden, it's got splinters, it has boards that have been replaced that are uneven, it has rungs and things that continue to get broken and vandalized, so that's probably something, and that's why we're, really what started this process was to say, what happens when that goes away, when it has to be, has to go away, how do we address, how do we respond to that? And that's kind of the beginning of how this whole dialogue started about two years ago, and that's what's brought us to the point to say, let's take a look at everything we have. We have a sense of how old the equipment is, the majority of the equipment, we have two pieces that are five years or younger, and the rest have been around for quite a while, with the largest being twenty-plus years.
Do you have children at that school right now?
I do.
What grades are they?
I have a kindergartner coming in the fall, and I have second grader.
So, five to seven years out, they won't even be there. So, your efforts, as great as they are, are now looking at
Other people's
Other people's children. And you've worked very hard to do this, and I salute your efforts, but I think we need to take a little bit different approach to this and keep adding and supporting what we have.
I agree, Martha. But it's also like the gifted and talented, or hopefully we'll use a different term like challenge, but it comes down to money. I would like to just say to this group, I think what you've done is extraordinary, just as Taylor did last year, and I think we are working in collaboration. Because of what Mike O'Leary and his staff have been able to do, they're out there evaluating, they're collaborating, and I applaud what you're doing, and I will tell you, having spent many, many hours recently playing on your playground, it is thoughtful, it is age-appropriate. I love how you've opened up the two areas, and you have fairly new equipment. So, and for a period of time, you all worked very hard, you actually got ahead of IGO, and yet we brought IGO along, whenever we had money, we put two thousand or three thousand down, we've done the same for Borough, and we've done the same for Taylor. And I agree with you, Martha, I think that should continue. I would also, you know, love to have you update us, because, not like we're going to be rolling any money anytime soon, as you know, we're running a deficit this year, so there wasn't a surplus, where in years, we've always been able to kind of take care of the playgrounds a little bit at a time and to do it with equity. Well, there's no money this year, but if you would, I would like to encourage you to please keep coming, letting us know your progress as all of the other schools are doing. And I would also like to suggest, Mike O'Leary and his team would be wonderful, and I know he's worked with you, last year, he did an audit, I know he'll do an audit again, and that structure, that's twenty years old, that was the structure I happened to have spent some time working on. What Invencis did was absolutely wonderful, it brought it back, almost looking like new. When the Eagle Scout, we painted it, to see the kids come up and the parents and say, wow, was incredible. But I have to say, because of the age, we need to keep looking at that, there are some struts, there are some even, Michelle, you and I have talked about it, I admit I'm klutzy, but if I'm falling and having trouble on some of those, I think there's some, some kids or others who may have that issue, and I know, Michelle, you were going to ask Martha to come out and look again, because I do think it's something that needs to be attended to. I think what you've done and what you'll continue to do should be commended, and I'm thrilled to see the elementary schools really working on that.
And Mike has been a great resource, and when I was on the board a number of years ago, he was really instrumental in helping us remove the tennis courts that were on the property that were a safety hazard for our kids, and that was taken care of and helped regrade. I know that area, the play area I was talking about, the rain garden, that area was, has been regraded and reseeded a number of times, and we continue to have, you know, some drain issues because of the way that it's pitching, et cetera. But he was instrumental, and he's been a great resource for us, and, you know, very helpful as we try to understand what challenges and maintenance issues do we, should we be keeping in mind as we think about the town needing to maintain the areas, you know, that we would potentially design.
I'd love to ask a clarifying question. It sounded to me, and I could be wrong, that you're raising money each year, but you're not going to just build that fund, but do you have a priority plan to replace certain things or add on certain things, or just a little bit to Martha's point, that you're not going to wait five years, let the playground sit the way it is, and then, so you'll be automatically upgrading as you go along, using the twenty-eight thousand dollars or some part of that, as you have now, and then, and then looking at moving this to another fundraising effort. I also see this, I see this a little differently, because I see this as a pretty common partnership between PTOs and general operating funds, whether you look at whatever funding source that is, across the other communities that I've worked in. So, and usually it is over a phased period of time, you're probably not going to raise a hundred thousand dollars in five years and spend that hundred in one summer. Am I right about that?
No, you're right, and that's our intention. We've had the opportunity to have conversations with many other towns and people who've embarked on similar projects to ours, sharing Mansfield, some other areas of, you know, friends and colleagues that we have in other parts of the state, and that's exactly that, we use that to inform our strategy and our approach, recognizing that, as I said, the next step for us to say, okay, if this is the plan we want to achieve, what do we tackle first? And we have some of our own thoughts about that, what will be, what that will be based on age, or safety, or need, or, but we'll work through that beyond the playground committee with Michelle and her staff, as well as, you know, the parents of the teacher organization. So, it is our intention to implement a phased approach with the rolling, continuing to raise funds to allow us to be able to do that, when we need to.
The reason we jumped in the way we did with Taylor was that there was a safety issue, and in order to
But they had raised
They had raised
Twenty-eight thousand, yeah. They had raised about, got a number from last year, yeah.
Over a couple of years, they really could work to do that.
Just a couple of questions. What are they charging you to put the master plan together?
About, just a little over four thousand.
A little over four thousand, okay. And one of the things to keep in mind is that, one of the issues we raised with Taylor is when the town, when the school committee decided that we would match some of those funds, it kind of threw a kilter for a little bit, because they had already picked out what they wanted, but we have to go out to bid under the state laws, and so, therefore, it changed the flow of things, and so, if you have certain things in mind in your plan, or certain vendors that you'd like to work with, our funding may not allow that, because if we have to go out to competitive bid, the ones you want to win may not be the lowest price. So, we have to work through some of those administrative-type things as well. The other, the other issue that Martha raised is one that we should probably, Chris, just step back for a moment and say, let's look at, at all of the, we'll call it the recreational needs at one point. In other words, we have your school, we have other schools, we have the tennis courts, we ought to be looking at, what are the total needs, and then prioritizing them and working through. So, for instance, these folks are working on raising funds to pay for it, the Taylor parents raised money, but we haven't heard anybody say that they're trying to raise money for the tennis courts, even though lots of people use the tennis courts. And so, what will happen is if we don't look at this collectively across everything, then as soon as we do something with Borough, then someone else is, okay, so that was Taylor, now it's my turn to kind of come in. So, maybe what we could do is have the chair schedule a session, a working session, where we actually talk through all of the recreational needs at all of the schools, including, you know, the middle school, the high school, and everybody, and really get a feel for where we are, where we think we need to be, what kind of partnership or cooperation we have throughout the town, and then how do we put together a multi-phased plan where we're all working together at the same time to do that.
May I say two things? First was just a question about, Mike had said that when we got to the point we were considering doing, purchasing something to work with him, is that the appropriate resource to work with in terms of what you were referring to, in terms of putting things out to bid and that sort of thing?
He would certainly have all that responsibility.
Okay, okay. I just want to be sure on that.
General Paul Johnson.
Okay. And then the second comment is that, similar to your point about how we look at things collectively, the Taylor's project is completed, as best I understand it, we have engaged in discussions with the IGO, trying to understand what their needs were and what their plans were, so that if we did choose, we were purchasing something in the same timeframe they were, that we could perhaps leverage that collective bargaining, whatever you want to call it. And we've also discussed, we had one additional fundraiser that we were looking to do at Founder's Day, and we were going to be doing that in partnership with the IGO, for a variety of reasons, it, just timing, in terms of when we heard back, we couldn't execute it and make it happen, but we are considering that as well, kind of working together with them, because they're working towards similar goals to ours in terms of playground.
And then the second comment is that, similar to your point about how we look at things collectively, the Taylor's project is, is kind of completed, as best I understand it, we have engaged in discussions with the IGO, trying to understand what their needs were and what their plans were, so that if we did choose, we were purchasing something in the same timeframe they were, that we could perhaps leverage that collective bargaining, whatever you want to call it. And we've also discussed, we had one additional fundraiser that we were looking to do at Founder's Day, and we were going to be doing that in partnership with the IGO, for a variety of reasons. It, just timing, in terms of when we, we heard back, we couldn't execute it and make it happen, but we are considering that as well, kind of working together with them, because they're working towards similar goals to ours in terms of playgrounds.
Exactly.
So we hear you on that, and we're open to that as well.
But I think it's our responsibility, and it's on the, it's on our to-do list, but to really bring everybody in. And we may say Taylor is where they need to be today, but, but we have to think about three and five years down the road and how that will change. So I think bringing in all the schools will allow us, and maybe we just devote one evening to it, maybe even if we have a special meeting, where we just really spend the evening talking through in a workshop format, what is the current condition in all the schools, what are all the different needs that we have, and how do we think through a plan collectively that will help us get to where we want to be?
And I just want to point out, we didn't, we didn't purposefully leave Taylor out.
I understand.
I think they needed a break, they had been working-
Right, no, no, no.
Especially with Norm and him.
Great. Thank you, that was terrific.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive presentation, thank you. Okay, I will now ask Dr. Martis to introduce the people who are going to discuss the Academic All-Star Program.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really terrific program that we've been talking about for a few months, and it's a partnership with the Craft Group and the New England Patriots. I'll introduce actually someone who is not here, who's a, a, a good friend of ours, and that's Dan Murphy, the Vice President of Business Development and External Affairs. He's unable to attend tonight, but I know that he's been very active in this program. And at this point in time, I will introduce Greg O'Brien, who is a media consultant for the New England Patriots and the Craft Group, and who's been working closely with many of us here, including Jeff Theodas, the Principal of Foxborough High School. And he is here in case we need to ask any questions as well.
And a school committee member for, how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years as a school committee member.
In another town, so I know, I know all about, again, my name is Greg O'Brien, I'm representing the Crafts and the Patriot Organization tonight, and Dan had to be with Mr. Craft at another meeting tonight. As Larry said, I know firsthand what it's like to sit on a school committee, being a member in another town. I know about your budget, budgets, and your opportunities and encouragements. I listened with interest to the discussion on the Playground Committee, and I was thinking that excellence in the schools really is a, is a collaborative community effort, and the Craft Organization is extremely pleased to partner with the Foxborough School District and Foxborough Schools with the Academic All-Star Program. Often in, in life, it's particularly in high school, and in college, it's the athletes who get all the praise. And this is a, a project that is designed to recognize achievement in the classroom, not only achievement, and it's achievement at all levels, not only achievement with, with the, the top students who, who deserve high honors, but also achievement among all students who are working harder. Excellence and perseverance are key, not only on the football field, like in organization with the Patriots, but in the schools, because you have to excel and you have to persevere. And this program is designed to encourage those students that might be having a C and push it to a B or a D and push it to a C, and, and to show them that, that there is a better way, and that there is encouragement in the community for them, and that, that we embrace this. And, and the Craft Organization and the Patriots embrace Foxborough Schools, we embrace the students, their parents, the school administration, and the school committee. We feel that schools are, are the core of any community, and, and we look forward to participation in this program. We will be having, and we're pleased to do this, honoring the Academic All-Stars June nineteenth at a luncheon at Gillette, and there'll be more to come on that later, where all of the students who are on the Academic All-Star Team will be honored along with their parents. And again, we're working very closely with the, with the administration, and Chris may, or, or Jeff may want to discuss, you know, how the Academic All-Stars are, are chosen, that's, that's, that's done by the schools, we're just a partner in that program. And we're also pleased to be part of the Education Foundation event on June fourteenth that's going to be held at Gillette. And, you know, I just wanted to tell you that the organization, the Crafts, you can count on our support in the schools, we believe it's the backbone of the community, and, you know, we'd like to honor the students and, and their parents and the teachers. Thank you.
Well, Greg, again, I, I want to thank you, I want to thank the Craft Group, as I mentioned, Dan Murphy, for all of the work that you've done in preparation for this. And I know that, Jeff, I don't know if you want to come up and talk a little bit about, we, we were talking this morning about, we think we have a hundred and seventy students that we will be recognizing. And Jeff, want to just talk a little bit about how that took place?
Sure, there's, there's two, it was a two-pronged approach. We wanted to recognize all our graduating seniors for maintaining a three-point-four GPA over their four years, but along the way, we also wanted to give the teachers the responsibility to acknowledge those students who worked hard in the classroom. And again, sometimes it's not all about getting As, it's putting forth your best effort, and we certainly have teacher recommendations of another sixty students who would fall into that category of, you know, working Bs to As or Cs to As, and we, we think that's an important approach as far as perseverance and hard work is concerned. So we anticipate about a hundred and sixty students being involved or being recognized at the luncheon. So we think it'll be a wonderful affair, and we certainly thank the, the Crafts and the Patriot Organization, and Greg, for helping us with this program.
And the timing of this, as we've talked earlier, the timing of this works well. It's our last day, formal day of, of finals. Be a nice way to culminate, even though we have one more day of makeup, finals, but it will be, it's a nice way to culminate the year, to give students an opportunity to have a terrific event at Gillette Stadium. A luncheon, I think, is very appropriate, and we hope that, that this is the beginning of a, of, of an ongoing relationship in this area, because as Greg mentioned earlier, the whole academic piece is something that we pay attention to, but we don't honor as much as we possibly could or should, so I'm really pleased about this.
You know, we are committed to the program in an ongoing way, and we believe it not only encourages the students, but it encourages their parents, and I, and I think it all starts at home, and we're proud to be part of this effort. Thank you.
Greg?
Greg, before you go, I want to personally acknowledge, you and I first started talking about this, I think, last November, December. And as someone who is a school committee member and who has experimented with ways to motivate students, reward students, recognize students, I just want to commend you for taking some lessons you've learned elsewhere and bringing them to Foxborough. And I, I know that the Crafts are, are very, very supportive, but it also takes a spark sometimes, and it was the spark of your idea, your discussion, your dialogue, they jumped right on it. But I also want people to recognize that, you know, your passion for this is very, very much all over this. And the, the discussion we had early on was, was, just as you said, so often athletics are the premier event, and, and seem to get a lot of attention. And from the very early discussions, you talked about how do we recognize not only the, the, the really outstanding students, but what amazed me is, is your thought around, how do we take a D student who works really hard and gets up to a C, or a C student who works up to a, to a B, and how do we recognize them, reward them? How do we help build their self-esteem? And how do we show them and motivate them that they can continue to work and get even better? And so I want to make sure that the public recognizes the amount of effort you've put into this idea, put in this energy into the whole topic. And it's something that, while we'll start the first one in June, and you've committed to support it going forward, I think it's going to be a great addition to what we do here in Foxborough, to make sure that the parents and the students are all motivated to do better, and to feel as though that just like our mission statement, we recognize people for their accomplishments. And, and thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Larry. As we had talked about earlier, this is a collaborative effort with the Crafts and the school committee and, and the schools. Mr. Craft is very committed to this community, always has been, and will continue to be, and this is just an example of that ongoing commitment, and he is pleased to be part of this program.
Absolutely.
Can I just briefly segue this to the other event that, that Greg, that you talked about? I think that we've been talking again for months about the kickoff event for establishing an education foundation in Foxborough, to be able to raise funds, to give back to teachers and, and other programs that we see. And I know that members of the committee have been very much involved with this over the last few months, so I want to just give people an opportunity to talk briefly and, and maybe put in another plug for this event on Saturday, June fourteenth.
Oh, we still have tickets available for the gala event. You can contact Judy and Larry at their home, myself. We do have to come up with a number by Friday, so if you're hesitating to call, don't hesitate too much longer, tickets are available, so please feel free to come, we're going to have a great night.
When do you have tickets?
When do you have tickets?
And again, you know, when we, when Martha and I first sat down with the Patriots to talk about the Faces Foundation we wanted to do, the first words out of their mouth were, how do we help it be more successful within Foxborough? And, and they strongly suggested that we have a gala, and that they would host the gala, and the Craft Organization has come forward, you know, they're going to host the gala, they're going to provide the food, the security, all the things to go forward to make an absolute phenomenal evening. And it was, again, rewarding to us that we didn't go to the Patriots and ask at all. We went to the Patriots and told them what we were doing. And they came forward and said, this is the kind of event, this is the kind of community support we want to be part of. And we welcomed their support, and we look forward to not only the event on June fourteenth, but their continued support in creating this foundation, which is going to allow us to let teachers write grants, to try innovative and creative things in the classrooms. And it's all about, again, motivating students, encouraging students, helping all of our students succeed. And so it varies, it very closely ties to the Academic All-Star Program in that it's trying to motivate and reward students, and in our case, give the teachers the resources to bring some of those programs into the classroom, that they, we just not have had the funding to do. So we've never had a foundation before, we've set a pretty big goal this year, but if we fall short of our goal, we'll still have a substantial amount of money raised, well above what we've ever imagined that we could, and we'll be able to hopefully have in place a program for September where teachers can start writing grants, and then we can start funding some of those grants, and really do some creative things in the classroom.
Is there a booth, is there a booth at Founder's Day?
Right, at, at Founder's Day, we'll be offering our raffle tickets, those are still on sale. We'll also have some tickets that might still be available for the gala, but they really would like to count on the sixth. And, and one important thing, Larry and I are sitting on this committee per se as citizens, now as school committee members, in that we won't be involved in any way with any of the decisions that will be made. We've been there as helping hands for this organization because we firmly believe in it, and I think both of us have enjoyed whatever we've been able to contribute to the group that is really behind us, so it's been a labor of love for us.
And hopefully, as, after the gala, there'll be more people that are interested in working with us and getting involved, and really taking a grassroots across the community, because teachers in kindergarten through high school are going to be able to apply for these grants. So we want to make sure that the folks in Burl that were here earlier recognize this is going to benefit them, and, and they support it as well, the same as in all of our schools, so it will help teachers at every level.
Larry, the, the words, how do we help is a mantra that is, is an ongoing part of the Craft Organization and, and Gillette, and we do, as you point out, recognize that there are efforts that the community needs to do and step forward to the cause of education, and we're happy to do so. And when you look at the budgets and, and some of the issues at the state level, it's the only way to sustain the quality of education today.
Yep.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Martis, as you introduce our incoming principal, the Taylor School, I would like you to describe the importance and the success of the process that we have successfully used.
Yeah, thank you. I thought, I thought that would be a nice introduction to this. I'm very pleased tonight to announce that I have appointed, and again, under the Education Reform Act in nineteen ninety-three, the superintendent can appoint the principal and, and other staff members. But this all started when we announced that longtime principal of the Taylor School, Kay Naylor, was, was retiring at the end of this school year. And so we started the process with, obviously with a job posting, and we ended up with fifty candidates, five-zero, and in this environment, that's impressive. That is not the number I'm hearing from most of my colleagues in other, in other communities.
Plus, we started late. We started the process.
Well, you know, it, it, some of that really depends on, on timing and how you move the process along. So we were able to, as I said, attract, I followed a similar process that we followed, that I followed in other communities, and that, and that we followed here for a couple of other, other successful searches. We created a screening committee of parents, and we have two parents here tonight, Michelle Gardner and Tina Belanger, who are part of the committee. We have two school committee members, Katie Adair and Bev Lord, who are part of the committee, and Debbie Spinelli chaired the committee. And as I, we had fourteen members, so we had teachers, parents, administrators, Michelle McCarthy was here, part of the committee, so gee, if we had a few more, we'd have the whole committee together, and we could actually talk about how that worked. But I really appreciate, because that, as many of you know who have served on these over the years, that is a tremendous time commitment. Not only is it a time commitment to make those meetings, and to make sure you're part of the interview process, but also read through all the packets and make decisions. I initially, because we had so many candidates, took the first twenty out, just for two reasons. One was to save paper and to save trees, and the other was that those were not people that I thought people needed to see anyway. So, and thirty is still a large number to screen through. Ended up interviewing candidates, they sent three names to me, unranked. I interviewed all three individually and decided that I would send forth a final two. We used a process where each candidate visited the school for the day. Debbie led them through a series of meetings with a number of people. We opened it up to parents, teachers, support staff, and I think it was a good process. I was able, after those two meetings, to spend a morning at the Taylor School, listening to people's reaction and gaining input, all the while I was checking references, checking names, checking with people that were not, maybe not on their reference sheet, but I knew, knew them and knew some of it by a work experience. And I'm very pleased to announce that Peter Regan has, has decided to join our team, and will start on July one as the new principal of the Charles Taylor Elementary School. So let me just give, just brief, just a, a brief background about Peter, and then he wants to say a few words, and then we can just open it up for, for some comments. Peter Connelly is the principal of the Cedar Elementary School in Hanover. He has been a principal and assistant principal in Mansfield, and he started his teaching career in Plymouth. All of the words that I heard from a number of different people was a real passion for education, a real passion for community, a real interest in understanding families and, and knowing students and teachers well, really immersing himself in this community, which were all terrific characteristics, and, and I'm very pleased to introduce Peter Regan.
Thank you. And it's a return for me, because I grew up in Foxborough, going through the Foxborough Schools starting up in Burl. It's-
We want to ask you about the playground.
I do remember the high one.
Was that structure, that brown structure there?
The brown structure was not there at that point. But as Dr. Martis had said, it was an excellent process, where it gave me a great understanding of exactly who the Taylor School is and what all the different groups there are looking for in principle. Each, each stage of the process, it was just giving me more and more insight into exactly the work that's being done here. With that as well, is Kay Naylor was a teacher of mine in the Ahern Middle School. So it's, it's an honor, but also the challenge of making sure that it continues the great work that she's set forth. She's had an excellent tradition here. I actually visited her when I was working at the Jordan Jackson School in Mansfield, so I'm really looking forward to working with the families, the staff of the Taylor School, the administrative team here. And I'm excited to begin in July.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions or comments, or?
Just, I would like to say welcome and, and give you an opportunity, because our search process is so in-depth and it so involves- search process is so in-depth and it so involves so many administrators and parents and, and teachers, you've learned a lot about us. What, based on what you've learned, what would you say are your top priorities in addition to carry on the traditions of Taylor?
First and foremost is to spend the time with parents, teachers, all the staff members of the school, to truly understand what is it that they love about the Taylor School that needs to continue? And then as well, what are some of the challenges that we face that needs to be gone? I, even though, even though the interview process was comprehensive and it was lengthy as well, you still don't have that insight, because often you're sitting in a group with many different constituents. What I'm looking forward to is to sit down and having those, either small group or individual conversations, to see exactly where people's needs are and to see what I can do to help them to move on.
Do we have a start date?
Looking at July 1, I actually had a conversation with this current superintendent, Christine Nash, this morning, and we played a little phone tag last week. And we also have agreed that if there are some transition issues that you need to continue to settle in Hanover, that we certainly would work that out collaboratively. And I know that she's going to have a conversation with you if she hasn't already today.
We're not today.
Okay. So, we'll work that out, but the official start date will be July 1, and if there needs to be a little bit of room on either side of that, we can, we can work on that.
Okay. Talking to some people this weekend, they're very excited about you coming, Peter, some of your classmates. And above you and below you, I know my son said, "You have to get that Peter Regan here." And I said, "I don't have any say in that." So, he, he was quite pleased to hear that, that you were coming on board. So, your word, your name is out there and people are excited about you coming back.
Thank you. I'm excited to be back.
Welcome back.
I'm excited to be back. Thank you.
Mr. Harrington?
No.
I just, I had the opportunity to meet you before and just want to welcome you.
Thank you.
Welcome and welcome home, Pete.
Thank you.
And this is one time where luck means preparation meets opportunity. We're very glad you've chosen to come to be with us.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. It's, it's been an exciting few days. Actually, after the site visit day, late that night, my wife's water broke and our third child is here, so it's been an exciting few days.
Six and a half weeks early.
Yes, six and a half weeks early. But he's doing well and he's home and life is good.
Wonderful.
Life is good. A lot of change.
And what is his name?
Quinn.
Quinn. Congratulations.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I've already said it's Quinn.
Welcome. Is this, is this consulting by the hour when we put you into now? No? Oh, this is called transition.
That's why I asked the date again, because I like the way we do transition. We'll loan you out because we're going to wheel you in a little out of schedule.
All right. Foxborough High School Guidance Update with Mrs. Laureen White and Mr. Jeff.
Lauren, I like that you're speaking from a lean.
Oh, trying to corral Dan to stay hot.
You made me feel good.
Yeah, we're here, we're, we'll cheer you on.
Tonight, what we'd like to do is kind of give you an overview of the guidance process. My first words to the committee was, "Don't touch the book until I start talking to you." You don't pay any attention to me, but obviously, it's too late. Everyone's engrossed in it.
Gotcha. I didn't go to that.
I only, I only say that because we're going to jump around a little bit this evening. I brought with me Laureen White. She's our director of guidance. You probably remember her from the middle school, and she's been a wonderful addition for us. She has that sense of what the seventh and eighth graders need and the transition to the high school, so she's been a valuable resource for our program. What we'd like to do is break it up into a couple of components. I'm going to ask Laureen to talk about the guidance services in our developmental guidance program that will be starting next year. And then I'd like to go over the college profile piece, excuse me, and the data we use to determine where our kids are going, if we're servicing them property gaps in, in our program, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we go. So, I'll open it up with Laureen and make me look good.
Don't touch the book. Yeah. Thank you for having us here tonight. We put this book together and we just hope that it just highlights some of the stuff that we do in the guidance department. If we turn to the guidance services, which is like the second tab, I just did an overview of some of the things that we've been highlighting on this year and we hope to expand on in the future. You know, and the first thing, we talked a little bit about scheduling. You know, we start scheduling basically from day one. We go down to the middle school and we, we meet with all the students down there. We do it in large groups and then individually. We do it with all the high school students here. We're trying to also go even younger. This is the first year we went to the Ahern a couple of weeks back, and we went with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students and parents to try to get them thinking about the high school at an early age. And it was very successful. It, it worked out well, and I hope in the future we'll get even more. I think we had about 100 people there, and I think that as the years go on, that will increase as well. So, we spent some time with the scheduling and working with the middle school, but again, we want to go a little younger. We, of course, do outreach to mental health agencies and social workers as needed. The next one is, we meet with the administration, excuse me, on a weekly basis to speak with them about students that we see at, at-risk students, whether emotionally or academically, and we try to brainstorm and come up with some ideas to help the teachers, help the parents, and everybody work with these students. The next one is going to take a little bit longer. It's a developmental guidance. We're going to be bringing the developmental guidance program back to Foxborough High School. We're going to start grade nine and go right through grade 12, and we're going to meet with these students probably about 10 times a year and in groups according to the grade level, because there's different needs for every grade level. And I did put a syllabus as well as, you know, cover sheet of what that's going to be. It's on the third tab, if you want to look over. Basically, I went through what we're going to be doing, the freshman guidance program, sophomore, junior, and senior, and it's just an overview of what we believe are critical points that we have to highlight in, in that part of the development. And then in the next pages, give the actual syllabus. Now, this is a work in progress. It's a live document. This is what we're going to be doing next year, and as the years go on, we'll add, take away, whatever we find necessary from the input from the students and faculty of what's worked and what needs more time. So, if you look at the grade nine, you know, we have a lot about orientation, study skills, time management and so forth. And then when you get to grade 10, they talk a little bit more about interest inventory, aptitude testing, getting their four-year plan together. But we also just touch base on maybe risky behaviors, maybe anger management, different skills that they need to learn, maybe. Grade 11, we start talking a little bit about individually what they want to do when they get out of school, their post-secondary, their motivation. We go over what their transcript is going to look like so they know how it affects their future. We start talking about careers and what classes they need to take in order to get to the college they want, to get to the career they want and so forth. Bless you. There's also some testing that's involved. You know, we have the PSATs that the 10th and 11th grade take, and with that, we're going to go over with them, what does that mean? How can we maybe promote our AP program? Because after you take the PSATs, there's something called AP potential, which it will identify which students have the strengths that they have, so we can say to them, "According to your PSAT, it looks like you would do very well in maybe AP Euro History. Why don't you give it a shot?" You know, we can try to identify them at a younger age, like maybe in 10th and 11th grade, to try to take those AP courses that they might be nervous about taking. But if they have the skills for it, we want to encourage that as much as we can. And I'm just doing a brief overview, so if you have any questions, please let me know. When you get to grade 12, we're going to do a lot of getting them ready for college, especially in the beginning of the year. They have to know how their GPA is going to affect what schools are going to be appropriate for them to apply to. We're going to introduce them to Ellen Pillsbury, who is the career, school-to-career person here at the school. Joe O'Neil is going to be involved. He's their college advisor. And we're going to speak to them about the deadlines and getting everything in and what is realistic for them to apply to. And if they decide they're not going to college, you know, give them some options, again, looking back at their aptitudes and their interests, and helping them apply for all the FAFAs and scholarships that might be out there. So, that's our developmental guidance program in a nutshell. What we're going to be starting in, right, right away in September, we're going to be working with the ninth grade and the seniors first, and then we're going to work with the sophomores and juniors. So, our hope is the first 10 weeks of school, we'll have, had a group or several groups with the freshmen and seniors, and then we'll have a group with the sophomores and juniors, like probably the second 10 weeks of school. Any questions on developmental guidance?
No, I guess the only comment I would make is that, you know, we as a committee, Jeff, had a very good debate a couple of years ago in trying to find the funding to address guidance across the entire district. And, you know, there was discussions about whether it was in my business, direct versus indirect, whether it was administrative or whether it was critical. And there was a lot of discussion around the fact that guidance was absolutely critical in terms of identifying students at risk, in identifying where we might have potential disciplinary issues, and that by cutting guidance as it had been cut in the past, it may have been contributing to some of the problems we're seeing within the school. And so, we were hoping to say, we're hoping to see that the, the new investments we were making in guidance would pay the results that we thought they would be in the outreach to the students, in dealing with early intervention, in dealing with many of the issues that you have in this, in your syllabus here. So, I guess I would just like you to comment in general, kind of how much progress you think we've made and how much more progress do we need to make continually? Because we'll be, over the summer, starting to look at a five-year financial projection for the town and the school, and I'm not, I don't think we've, we've accomplished everything we need to accomplish with guidance across the entire district. So, I guess I'd be interested in, in your assessment, in, in where we've made the most progress and where do we still need additional focus or additional attention? And obviously, you can focus it to your high school, but I think it's something, Chris, we need to really be talking about across the whole district since you're here.
I, I think the key piece is taking our guidance counselors and using them as teachers to help us facilitate those points that you just made and to interact with our kids as much as possible. I, I think when you have two, between 200 and 300 students that you, as your caseload, what can you do and do it well, I think, is what we're striving for. So, as we have these conversations, we're going to look at what we think we can do well and, and put them to the forefront. And I think one of them is to get them in small groups. And again, our kids, and kids in general, not just Foxborough kids, are kind of clueless to the whole college process. But they're also clueless to the competition that's out there and how hard a lot of students work. And so, we need to keep ratcheting up our level of expectation for what we want our kids to do. And it's, you know, you bang heads with students, and then again, you've got a needy student who gravitates to a counselor and takes more of their time. So, again, I think what we want to do is develop a streamlined process that we can say, "All our kids are going to do or have A through Z. That's what we promise all our kids." Right now, it's uneven. And it'll always be a little bit uneven because sometimes kids, as well as parents, won't advocate for themselves, won't come forward and say, "I need help." So, then you're, you're kind of going after them as much as you can within the time constraints that you have to pull them into the program, to give them, arm them with as much knowledge as possible for their success. So, I think we have a website that we want to increase and utilize more and put more pertinent information each year that our parents can access and that our students can access. And I think we want our kids to understand their strengths and weaknesses at an earlier age and what's out there. So, I think it's all, it just keeps moving back to the seventh grade, the sixth grade to make them as, as well-informed as we possibly can. That takes time and that takes personnel to do that. But I think we're on the right track. I think the critical component for this, for the guidance department is stability. We've had, had no stability. So, I think next year will be the, the first time we'll have at least a, a majority of the group together in their second year. So, I think that's huge. We took a setback this past year because we, we lost some personnel to, to other districts. You know, it's just, it happens. Sometimes you can't control it, but it did. So, that put us behind the eight ball a little bit. So, I think, you know, the continuity of the program will be a huge positive piece for us. Thank you.
To follow Larry's question, if I may?
Sure.
That's an excellent you asked, Larry. District-wide, will the philosophy, Laureen, be to use this developmental guidance model? We're going to showcase, we're going to bring it back, improve it, and this is the most efficient way to impact student achievement. That's, that's, this is the new model. So, you're, you're helping to educate us. I'm trying to get all my hands around this. Will it be then, answer to Larry's question, then we'll roll that out district-wide after successful implementation at the, at the high school? Will it get into the middle school, this model, and even, you know, at the elementary? Well, from where you're sitting, do you, do you see that as an appropriate use?
No. One of, one of the other pieces that goes hand in hand is in any ASC component that says, "We want you to personalize a student's education." Personalize means a, an advisor and seven or eight advisees, and I haven't quite figured out how we're going to, how we're going to do that yet. But I think that would be critical to the guidance model, is to have students have an advocate for them as, as another form of counseling for all our kids. And it's all about making connections and the number of connections you can make per student. So, now you're on. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you at this point what, how it should roll out to the middle school or the elementary school. I just don't have a good handle on that.
But is that going to be the approach, or is that what we need to, as we further examine this? This is the new model. So, we're going to take a look at what's the competitive information, how we arrived at it, so we'll be chewing to know that it's, it is efficient and effective, and I think that will help us to educate. So, as we go into budgeting, we know what we need to advocate for. So, you're helping to educate us. But I think the question that Larry says, we've been, we need to know what's going to be system-wide with guidance. We need to impact the high school in a very specific way, and there are going to be benchmarks, but we need to know that it's going to be systemic. It's going to be district-wide.
I'd like to, I'd like to call it the new-old model, because some of this would sound familiar to a lot of people who have been in education for a while. But I, I think if you think about it in, this is how I think about it, so I don't know if this will be helpful to you. I think about a good high school guidance program as having four components. And one is the developmental guidance that Laureen and Jeff have been talking about, which could be considered group guidance. Sometimes you talk about that. Where you're really being a little bit proactive about the issues the kids are going to face and giving them information prior to when they're really going to need it. So, that's what she's talking about with developmental guidance. They're going to have some summer curriculum work as the academic subjects area do to really map that out a little bit more closely this summer. The second area is college counseling, which everybody's familiar with. The third area is therapeutic groups, which is something in the future that we may, you know, be discussing a little bit more. So, the kids who have a similar issue going on, it could be, you know, dating relationships. It could be students who are from dysfunctional homes. It could be whatever it is, alcohol resistance, but that you have some therapeutic groups going eventually. That's a healthy thing to do. And the fourth thing is that individual mentoring that Jeff was talking about that is a little bit challenging. So, there's somebody to care for you as a student, and it might not be an academic subject teacher, it's somebody in the building you can connect with that's going to watch over you a little bit more closely. So, really, that's how I think about high school guidance, is that we should have those four components in place. And I, I, I'm thrilled with this guidance report that they did because it really is so comprehensive and well-done. And I think if you look through it, you'll see most of those things referenced, so I, I commend them for the work they've done. And I know going into the future that that's what they're looking to address, but if it's helpful, that's how I think of the four areas, so.
And then just to answer your question too about going to the lower levels, presently, my understanding is it is happening to some extent at the lower levels. I know that the elementary schools are going into the classrooms and doing some teaching, and the middle school is as well. Is it system-wide, this, you know, we do have a curriculum from K to 12? The answer is no, but I think that we do need to get a developmental guidance program from K to 12. And how each school implements it, I really don't have the answer to that. I know at the high school what we're going to do, and I guess we need And I guess we need to maybe give them guidelines of what needs to be covered and how many sessions and so forth. But then the principals at those school would probably address how that would happen.
And that really, just to pick up on that, because I think it's a good point, that really would be, uh, work that we'll begin to do in the fall as we look at what the middle school component looks like. To Kate's point, it would be another good presentation to be able to say, here's what, here's what the guidance program looks like at the middle school presently. And here are the goals. Here are the things that we'd like to do to make the program better because we know that there are some areas that, that we know we need to cover. Because as we implement this at the high school, we're going to be, you're going to have expectations for what you want kids to come to the high school with. And that needs to be clearly articulated. And we can build the program really back from that. So we could have that, we can have those conversations. But it is, as Debbie mentioned, it is exciting to have now a vision for really what we want to do. And then it's just, it's our responsibility to make sure that that's implemented and is more seamless as students move up through the system.
Mike, what's hard is to try and put a program back together. I know we had group guidance before. It was effective. And I, I think every parent and every student knows that the more people that have access to your child, the better off you are. And you see them in a much different light, a different venue. And I think that's very important. And I think, you know, when we got away from the group guidance, um, it wasn't a wise decision. Unfortunately, um, I know I heard time and time again, nobody knows my child. And we should never have to do that. So I, I think the, the, you know, once you get the group guidance back into place and these students have more access to their, to their guidance counselors. I mean, the numbers were phenomenal. There's no way they could teach those children. And unfortunately, um, it's tough to put it back together. But I think this is, you're on solid ground.
And I think that some people might have the idea that going into the classrooms might take us away, um, from the guidance. And it actually doesn't. And it would give us more time. Because we might be saying the same spiel 10 times to 10 different kids. And we're not going to reach the kids that don't come to us or we don't seek out. This is going to get everybody, like you said, everybody's going to have this, this, and this. And then there's, we'll also do the individual needs as, um...
Well, I think it'll be easy for the teachers too because, you know, they're the ones that see it in the classroom. They see a change and they can go back to the guidance counselor responsible for their child. So there is a good, uh, connect. There's been a disconnect. And unfortunately, it needs to be put back together. And I think this is a good way to do it.
Okay, you just have, I'm just, uh, have, did you look at other school districts to see what kind of guidance programs that they had? And what did you find?
Okay. I did. There, yes, sorry. There are several school districts that are, um, have this in full force. And there's others that are working towards it. And I'll be honest with you, um, our intent is to have it very small and personal and, you know, intimate, like smaller classes. Some schools, just because of the numbers, they have to have like an auditorium session with the juniors or an auditorium session with the sophomores. And we weren't interested in that. So there's some that are doing that. There's others that are doing it similar to what we're doing. But all of them are, um, moving towards this kind of model. Every district that I, um, spoke to in the area are all realizing the value of this and are moving towards it. And I did get the curriculums from all the neighboring schools and, um, kind of looked at what everybody was doing to see if we could, you know, take from here, take from here and so forth.
How did you come up with the frequency of how often these, um, groups are going to be meeting? Because they're all, the students are going, grades nine through 12, all students will be assigned to a group that will meet once per cycle for one quarter.
Right.
There are four quarters. So what's going to happen at times when they're not being seen? Or how, how do you, how do you see that? I mean, I'm understanding it must be, you need more bodies as, you know, in terms of Larry's question about, you know, finances and what you're going to need in the future. But how did you come up with that?
I think as a starting point, we looked at the material we thought would be pertinent for the four levels. And it came out to somewhere between eight and 12 times that we would have group counseling. That doesn't preclude them from having individual counseling. Uh, this was the first year we were able to put into effect that we, we truly met with every single student on the scheduling component to make sure that, you know, it was from the words right out of their mouth of their parents, what they wanted to take for courses. Because we were tired of changing 20, 30% of the courses when a student walked in the door and decided they didn't want to take that particular course. That has a tremendous impact in the, in the classroom environment. And, um, uh, you know, just the change of, of courses you have to make in the process, so.
The first couple of weeks of school, you know, they were spending guidance waiting to make a change. And now we're hoping, because we met with everyone individually. They sat in our chair and we went over it. And we heard it right from their mouth, what they wanted to take and alternatives. Absolutely.
In addition to this?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So like Jeff said, is, um, the lessons, we were figuring, we probably need about 10 lessons, 10 presentations for each grade level. And that's how we came up with the 10. And then when we're looking at when will they meet? We don't want all the guidance councils out of the guidance area all at once. So we're figuring, you know, one or two could be teaching while the rest are in the, you know, the office and, um...
And it doesn't mean we can't assess the need where we have to meet with the entire freshman class or junior class. It just means that that's, that's a starting point of, of the document and of our thought process, so.
Do you find that junior year though is the year that requires obviously more time from guidance in terms of, from the stu-, for the students?
And I think it might, just to let you know. Because when we were putting the syllabus together, we were real, you know, what we needed to cover. And we were realizing that we're not sure if we're going to be able to do it in the 10 sessions. And so, like I said, this is the live document. It's working because we might need to expand that for a couple more. And our goal is to be taking the students out of, um, like study. So if we decided that the juniors, um, needed more time, we would try to work that in for a couple more weeks.
But you'll still have Joe O'Neil will still do the college component individually. Ellen Pillsbury will still do a piece for us on career that will all be integrated.
Absolutely. And they might, they might even do like a presentation in each of those classes as well as a gr-, with a group.
Does Joe O'Neil do groups or is he strictly individual?
He does individual most of the, he does have a couple of students that come in together. But he also runs these night sessions on Thursday evenings in which parents and students can come in small groups. We do the, um, larger groups, um, one in the fall and one in the spring. We just had the juniors in, the junior parents in not too long ago, where we went over the whole process as a large group in the 122. So he does large groups. And then every Thursday evening, he does smaller or interdisciplinary.
Is that from September to June?
Um, I don't have the dates, but it's, I think it's October. And it just ended last Thursday, was the last Thursday. So October through May.
And what is it, every week, is there a different set of family, students and their parents? Is that how?
It was every Thursday evening.
And is the class divided?
I believe it was six to eight. And he gave a, um, what they were going to talk about or what, you know, people were going to, um, be discussing in that group. Um, but he basically said, any parent who had any questions, yeah, feel free to come any Thursday night and he'll, he will find the time for you. And it was, it was mostly junior, the beginning was senior parents. And then it turned into mostly junior parents.
Makes sense.
If I could just follow up Kate's question because it's so important for us to be educated and for the audience at home, what were the schools you looked at? And particularly, did you also look public and private? Because we hear some information, sometimes people do choose to go to, um, um, private school. We're not afraid to compete with that. But we want to, we need to be able to say, in terms of guidance or whatever, that we're, that we're offering similar or comparable or state-of-the-art. So if you could educate us and then for the audience at home, who you looked at.
That is a good question.
Absolutely. Some of the names. So, no. We looked at, um, King Phillips. Um, and I met with the director of guidance in King Phillips. We spent some time together. Um, I met with, um, we talked about private too. Um, Catholic Memorial, you know, um, we, we met with them. With, um, Brockton, we did a whole presentation with Brockton. Um, Mansfield, I, I can get you the list. I don't want to miss anybody. But, um, I looked at what Mansfield was offering. Um, trying to think of, Milton, yep. Um, we went through Milton, um, Stoughton, looked at Stoughton.
We all like Stoughton.
So you, you looked at, at larger schools though?
Yes.
We, we... We have a connection.
Mansfield, yeah.
Milton, those are all larger schools than ours.
Yes. So, you know, and like I said, some of them were doing it in a larger setting than, um, I thought would work for Foxborough. So I basically took their curriculum and what they were working with. Because I still think that no matter what schools you look at, developmentally, all the students have the same needs, the same years. It's just how you reach them. So the, the size of the school, I don't know if that matters. I wanted to make sure I was getting all the core ingredients of what to go over with the students and to teach. How many were in the class? They can do it the way that they think is best for their school. I thought the Foxborough, the smaller setting of about 25 to one or even maybe a little smaller, it worked better for Foxborough.
Well, that's a, name a number on class size because that's something we always wrestle with. So are you really hoping for 25? And you might end up sometimes with 28. Or is the number really 20? And you might end up with 22 to 24. Just help to level set us on class size because we struggle with that from a budget perspective.
And we might be held a little bit hostage like you are when you build a schedule because we're going to try to take them out of study halls and out of wellness. And then we have the problem, what do you do with a student that has seven classes and no study halls? When do you reach them? So we're either thinking about an after-school or a before-school kind of program to service those kids as well. So it's not clean as far as how we're going to, how we're going to gather those students. But, but the point is, most of the classes will be, I would say, there wouldn't be more than 20. And we have the luxury, if it's, if it's larger than that, to bring on an extra guidance counselor during that timeframe to take the overflow, if you will. So we're going to have to look at our study halls, see how they break down and, and grab the students' salary.
So then the ideal is current. That's just helpful for us to...
I shouldn't say I should ask, Lorene. I may stand corrected.
No. I would, I would definitely like to keep it under 25. I guess the ideal would be 20. I just think that, um, if they get any larger, we're not going to be able to have those conversations that I think need to be had.
Makes sense. Thank you. That helps Jeff.
Yeah, just, just one more question to, to Jeff. Unrelated, you've been here now three years. Um, would you just share with us what you think the two biggest changes in the high school have been under your administration?
I don't, it would be a hard one, um, only because I really didn't have the perception of what was going on before. Uh, I know we had a couple of difficult classes the first two years as far as certain core groups were concerned. Uh, this has been a very, very easy year, if you will. I think part of it is the addition of the assistant principal because now actions are handled immediately and, and consequences are meted out. Uh, and there's an extra set of eyes and hands with teacher evaluation, observation, et cetera, which is, which is very important. Uh, and I think the kids have begun to understand what our expectations are. You know, when you're here your first year, I'm not sure the kids have that loyalty towards you because they don't know you, they don't know who you are, they don't know what you kind of stand for along the way. So with three years, I think our students understand the expectations, what we want. Uh, and, and they buy into it. And I just told the seniors the other day, I thanked them at a meeting because I asked them to be leaders and role models for our building this year. And they certainly were. Uh, and so we, I think we're on a real solid foundation. And, um, you know, we can only go up. And I think the way we're going to go up is to continue to challenge and, and raise our standards. Because I think the behavioral elements are there to stay now.
Good. Excellent.
Thank you. Very comprehensive.
Can I, can I just make one other comment? What I would like to see happen this time next year is to have you come back and please give us, or maybe even before now, but give us an update on, you know, what's worked, what hasn't, what it is that you see as changing. I know you mentioned, um, Jeff, about, you know, in the future, you didn't kind of give a date for it, but this idea of one particular faculty member perhaps following a small number of students closely. And I would love to hear more ideas about when that might be able to become a reality or how you envision that happening. So again, just as you said, it's a working document.
It is.
So I would definitely like to keep hearing more feedback.
We've had conversations about that with the faculty as far as what that would shape, what that would look like. And, uh, I, I can't say that we've come to a consensus of what it would look like, but the conversation has started.
Right. That's, that's what we want to hear. Thank you.
Just, just a couple of, of other pieces. One of the, if you turn to the first tab, um, for a college profile, uh, one of the things, and I give the school council credit my first year, is that they really went after trying to get, develop quality documents that we would support our kids' effort going into college. So you've seen this before, but this, this Foxborough High School's school profile follows all our students. So all the application material is put in there. So when a college, um, placement officer looks, they have all the pertinent information related to Foxborough and teachers and, uh, class rank, et cetera. The, the second piece we're able to add this year because of Power School is our transcript, uh, which is the second, which is the blue document. And then the third is the secondary school report that the guidance counselor fills out on each and every one of our students. It may seem like a meaningless piece, but the presentation of our documents that go to the colleges are very high-quality. And I, and I know that because I serve on a couple of scholarship committees in, in different areas in, in Massachusetts. And I can tell you that that's not the case with all schools. And in fact, I'm going to scratch your head and say, I can't believe they're submitting this document for their kids. So I think these are three quality documents that help hopefully to support our kids. Uh, as far as end-of-the-year reports, one of, I just wanted to share with you where our seniors are headed this year. So we have a couple of documents that I'll go over very, very briefly. If you look at the orange tab where it says end-of-year report, we have 202 graduating seniors. 79% will matriculate to four-year colleges. And, uh, 10% will attend two-year colleges. Uh, now, the number of applications sent out was 947. What we were looking at is, one, where our kids ultimately decided to go to school. But even more importantly, where were they accepted? So in some cases, they, they might not have gone to a school you might consider a little bit more prestigious because they get a better financial aid package at another fine quality institution. So when you're talking $50,000 now is the price tag to go to school, uh, you know, our kids are becoming savvy as far as where to go and what to choose. So the numbers won't be exact as I go on because we're at the mercy of our students. We know where we sent the applications out. But unless they respond back to us and we ask them and let us know what they got accepted or where they got rejected, we may not have every single college. But we have a real good flavor for what our kids, where our kids have gone. If you look under matriculations, uh, if you look at, um, the various years, starting with 2004, it's been pretty consistent, about 87, 90, 89% of our students have gone on to either four or two-year colleges. So I think, you know, that's, that's a pretty good, pretty good number. Uh, the next document, matriculations, uh, starting with American University, this is where our students ultimately enroll. That's where, this is where they're going. So again, if you look at the colleges, uh, it's a pretty diverse group of, of schools.
And this may change, Jeff. I mean, for instance, in OE, we say 79% of four-year colleges. But that may, that may actually go up as well as, because this is, this is a living document.
Right. We have a student today who just came and told us. So absolutely, every data's changed.
I don't, I know of a few, a few here that are, they didn't tell you.
I think we're close though, but yes.
As of Friday, we could say.
Yeah.
I wonder, has there ever been any tracking? It, uh, this 10% that goes on to two-year colleges, some of those choose to complete a four-year program.
Ultimately.
Ultimately. But that, we don't have any reflection of that anywhere, do we?
No.
No. No, we don't.
But that, I mean, that would be a very nice statistic to know.
Jeff, have you, I know you talked about students that receive acceptances that don't actually end up attending those universities. That information is not listed here.
And the last...
The last tab.
It's the second-to-last document. Always say, uh, statistical studies?
Yeah, under statisti, yeah, under statistical studies, again, starting with American International College, the APP.
The next section.
Yeah.
I'll look at your, oh, right there. Okay. Okay. Great.
So the first institution, American International College, there was one applicant. WL means waitlisted, ACC means accepted, REF means refused, and the M means that they matriculated. That's where they're going to school. So we have a breakdown of where our students have applied as a student body, where they've been accepted, where they, where they've been rejected. The interesting part is, there's still a large amount of students on waitlists. Probably, I think our number was about twenty percent of our students were on waitlist. Now, whether they're going to go there to, to go to school, I, I don't know, but...
Have you ever done this before, given this kind of data?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I was, this, I think this is helpful. I think this is, thank you for doing that, because I think one of the questions that I hear oftentimes is, where are students being accepted to? They read the, you know, in the report of where they're going, but they don't always read where they've been accepted to, and I think that this will highlight.
Well, I don't know how we've constructed, but one of our other thoughts is to put this on the website, so we build kind of a student database of where our kids have gone over three, four, five years of time, so parents and students can look at this and...
But just also where they were accepted is a very interesting statistic, even though they choose not to go there.
Exactly.
Right.
What, this year nationally, were there more college applicants? Was there a...
Absolutely.
This is a big bubble. And do people understand that? Because I've heard a lot of young people were disappointed, that they didn't realize they were in competition because of the bubble.
It's getting, the competition is getting stronger and stronger, and we're also hearing that schools are stopping accepting applications, like we had a whole lot in December and even more in January, they're like, don't even send us anymore, because they said we have too many. We were getting letters all the time, so kids are, oh, I was going to apply in February.
How big a bubble was that this year?
I, you know, I don't know the numbers, to be honest with you.
We actually saw that in, Larry, you had gotten this. The, the growth figure nineteen ninety is the biggest. Next year would be big, but not as nineteen ninety was the biggest growth year. Okay? And it will start to go down.
So start to go down a little.
Yeah, but, you know, as I said to many of our seniors, I'm sorry, I'd be happy to write a letter for you to Northeastern, but if I, it's my alma mater, and I would not be accepted there today. I, I, it just breaks my heart, the number of people who were National Honor students, who, who, who were trying to be very competitive, and they were not accepted to, to their first run schools.
And the other, and the other thing that went hand-in-hand with it was the volatility of the economy, because there were a lot of students that got into school but weren't getting necessarily money as associated with, you know, the price of admission, too. And, and the, and the last piece is acceptance according to weighted GPA, and it just gives our students an idea of those students who were accepted, what their grade point average was for acceptance. So again, it's just another way to break down, break down the information. It's carried, why, it's carried out to the ten thousand, so, you know, five-point-four-zero to five-point-four-nine would be that top group.
Which is only one criteria to get into a school, but I thought it was interesting.
This might be useful information for juniors, who are starting to look at schools, to look at their peers from previous year. Again, one component, but...
And that is absolutely one of the things we're going to do in that developmental guidance, is to go over realistic choices.
Just to, just to clarify on the weighted grade point. So these are our students who have, for instance, the first on a grade point average of five-point four to almost five-point-five.
Right.
They were accepted at Boston University, George Washington Georgetown, Northeastern, Tufts and UMass.
Correct.
Okay. That's great. This is excellent data. Because you can then give kids an opportunity to link that in the future, that if you do this, I, I, I mean, it's a little more technical maybe than, you know, than, but it would be interesting to break this down a little bit more and make it user-friendly for middle school kids, because that could be part of the component as they move through for, you know, here's where, if you do this well, these are the opportunities. I always think of, in a very general way, what we do in public education is we build opportunities. And, you know, some of that is, you know, we can help to guide you, but you need to also put in the time and effort to build that opportunity as well.
And I find they could use this to the transcript. Have you noticed at the bottom of the transcript, at the end of ninth grade, they know where their GPA is? They can say, okay, if I keep this up, I can end up here, you know?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's great. Nice document.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is exciting. You can also encourage the juniors next year to get their applications in early.
Absolutely. I think that the seniors realize this year that they, they should have done it earlier than they thought. It's too bad, but yes.
Thank you. Have a nice rest of the evening. Mr. Jackson, it looks like you're on the deck with the monthly budget update for us, please.
Thank you. The monthly budget statement that we have prepared has some relatively good news. We were able to reduce the short, projected shortfall by a little over fifty-four thousand dollars, so that we're now projecting a shortfall in the budget overall, combination of salaries and expenses in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. I have attached the highlights, or on the cover memo, there are the highlights of the changes. And then, as usual, we have attached the changes with the totals by account. I think it's some of the notable changes that I'd like to point out. We re-projected sped tuitions, and that brought us into a favorable position of a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. We re-projected bus routes and picked up about a little over seven thousand. Picked up an additional eight thousand in heat, almost thirteen thousand in electricity. We took a look at the electricity, and we projected the last couple of months, and we had a relatively warm spring, but it wasn't warm enough to turn the AC on, so that we weren't really heating, but we weren't really cooling, so it really gave us an extra kick in terms of savings on, on the electricity. And then the school committee superintendent lines, we picked up about ninety-eight hundred dollars, so that we've really made a dent in the original projection. We still have some substantial overruns. The tuition, special education tuition account still sits at a hundred-sixty-one thousand dollars in the red, and out-of-district transportation for those special needs students is eighty-four thousand dollars in the red. However, we have been able to transfer some money out of various accounts to overall lower this deficit to the ninety-eight thousand dollar figure. And I just wanted to point out once again that when we budgeted for the out-of-district tuitions, we only budgeted for students that we really knew about. And we did not budget for students that we thought might be going out. We certainly couldn't budget for students that had moved into the district, and we certainly have students that had moved in, that we had new placements in. And we also have some students that we had budgeted for that actually moved out. But we were very tight with the way we budgeted tuitions, and it broke the wrong way, so that the shortfalls on the tuition account really had nothing to do with, other than we were very tight on our budget and things didn't break our way. On the out-of-district transportation, some of these changes, again, were not predictable. But specifically, and I don't have the exact number, but we spent a fair amount of money on homeless transportation, which is a relatively new mandate for us, the Kinley-Vento Act. And we've transported students that now live in Foxborough back to wherever they went to school or from another town that they now live, to Foxborough. And those tend to be singletons, they tend to be students that you can't put on a vehicle with other students, so it gets very expensive. And that's part of the driving, one of the driving factors of the out-of-district transportation. Bus fuel, we budgeted two dollars thirty cents a gallon for bus fuel, and although you don't see it, we were about five thousand dollars short on the bus fuel, but we transferred money to cover the fuel shortage for our school buses from one of our existing transportation accounts in terms of supplies related to the servicing of the buses. But we budgeted two dollars thirty cents a gallon. Most of the year, we paid two dollars sixty cents a gallon. In April, it jumped to two dollars and ninety cents a gallon. May and June is now at three dollars thirty cents a gallon. And for next year, our budget number is at two eighty a gallon, so we're already fifty cents a gallon short. And we used, and I'm going to round this down, forty to forty-five thousand gallons of fuel a year on the buses. So right now, at three dollars thirty cents, our bus fuel for 'oh nine budget is about twenty-two thousand dollars in the red. That's really the highlights on the budget summary statement. The one account, when I say one account, there's several accounts, but the main out-of-district tuition account, a hundred-sixty-one thousand, I'm, I have about a hundred-sixty-one thousand dollars with invoices that we have not paid. The intent will be, as we hopefully continue to diminish this deficit, at some point, the balance will have to be paid, since I can't finish the year in the red, we will pay the balance of the tuitions out of one of the revolving accounts, either tuition revolving or circuit breaker. It does look like we're going to pick up in the, about twenty-three thousand dollars of additional circuit breaker revenue. The state had indicated that we would receive about five-hundred-ten thousand dollars for circuit breaker revenue, and they had some additional funds which they've distributed in the fourth quarter payment. We should pick up another twenty-three thousand, which was good news in our circuit breaker account. So at this point, I'm expecting on the sixteenth, I'll have another budget update, and hopefully we'll have some additional good news. I don't think it's going to be substantial, but I'm really hoping to pick up between ten and twenty thousand dollars of ins and outs in other accounts, which we'll then use to drive down the deficit. And the balance would be, any monies that we don't pick up, I'll have to charge those trans, those tuition accounts, again, either tuition revolving or the circuit breaker.
Larry?
Just a couple of comments. Number one, I've talked to Paul, with gas prices being the way they are, you know, we're one of the only community, one of the few communities in the area that has no student fees, there's no bus fees, no athletic fees or anything else. And when we take a look at the bus routes this summer, I think we're going to have to take a very hard look at how many stops we make. You know, at times, you know, if you live under two miles, you have to walk to school, but if you get a bus, you sometimes only have to walk a hundred yards to the bus stop. And so I think we're going to have to take a real hard look at the bus routes, the bus, number bus stops. I don't think we're going to be able to be as accommodating as we've been in the past, because when you look at the fuel price so far above the budget, we're going to have to look at ways that we can make some of that up. And it's going to require some, some, probably some tough decisions on the bus routes, and hopefully over the summer, you know, we'll have a meeting where we can, we can discuss that. But to go into the school year with that much of a shortfall on, on the bus account, we've got to look for creative ways to do that. I also wanted, I wanted to make sure that both Paul and Chris are commended for the work that they've done. As, as Paul pointed out, the reason for the, the over-budget situation is the new students that moved in during the year and the students whose needs were different than what we anticipated. It wasn't due to budgeting issues, and it wasn't due to mismanagement, it was simply due to the facts of students. And despite that, Chris and Paul have worked throughout the year with all of the administration to look at ways that they could reduce that. The question I had for you, Paul, is, you're saying it's ninety-eight, four eighty-three. You and I have talked about the fact that you think there's a chance we'll bring that under ninety thousand by the, by the next report. But that extra twenty-three thousand in the circuit breaker account, will that actually take the deficit down in essence further, because you'll be able to use that towards the, the special needs?
Yes.
Right. So I guess to put it a little bit differently, if we can get it under ninety, and then we've got twenty-three thousand more than we anticipated in circuit breaker, that gets it into the sixty thousand dollar range. So I, I think when you look at where we were six months ago, looking at a quarter of a million dollar plus, I just want the public to recognize the effort that the superintendent and, and his entire team have done in, in trying to, to manage that to the very best way possible. And I think getting it down to where at the end of the day it might be in the sixty thousand dollar range is really heroic. And I want to congratulate you for all the work you've done, and all of your team for, for getting us there.
Is there ever any possibility to consider, with the special ed transportation, because that's so expensive, combining it all, like somebody in Mansfield driving through Foxborough on the way to Canton, to the school, is there?
We actually do that now.
We already do that?
There's, there's been, actually, there's been some grant money through collaboratives that one collaborative in the Metro West area, working with one of the collaboratives that, that we belong to, BIKO, to look at those routes and to try to consolidate and to share information. It's, it's, it wasn't that long ago that we really didn't share that information, because we felt that there were, you know, we were, we were, you know, using our own transportation systems. So we are working on that. We do some of that already. I think there's still some room to do more of it, but we do some of it already.
So you're already looking that way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Adam, do you want a motion to accept the budget report?
I would like a motion, and a second. Thank you, Larry. Motion, part of the second. All in favor? Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spennelli, textbook adoptions.
Let me, let me start this one, but just to give a little bit of context. One of the reasons that we put the textbook adoptions after our last meeting with the long, in-depth discussion about our needs for textbooks, I wanted to make sure that we had a monthly budget update, so that people had a framework for what we were going to be able to recommend to the, to the committee. And just even to pick up on Larry's last comments about the budget, thinking that we're going to be able to bring that ninety-eight thousand dollar number down, I feel even more confident that we'll be able to fund this, and that we do have some money in the circuit breaker revolving fund and the tuition revolving fund to cover any, anything in FYO eight that, that is over. This will allow us to continue to make progress in the areas that we talked about at the last meeting. So Debbie, I'll give that right over to you.
Thank you very much. In the memo, you can see that we've outlined where the funding sources are going to be for the various textbook adoptions that have come before you, both at the last meeting and about six weeks ago. So you can see our textbook adoption budget, in the district budget this year, is only sixty thousand dollars. We've already gone ahead and purchased fourteen thousand dollars worth of U.S. history textbooks. That was at a previous meeting. We have kids starting U.S. history in September that we didn't have books for, because of the change due to the MCAS testing being a little bit more high stakes from now on. So that left us with a balance of only forty-five thousand dollars in this year's textbook adoption. As you know, you've been undergoing curriculum review in mathematics, K through five, and now this year was six through twelve. So out of those reviews comes recommendations. So you, as, just as you per, you approved a new math program for K through five last year, at last month's meeting, you heard the request for a new program for the six through eight students, grade six through eight, and that's Impact Mathematics. As you can see, we do not have enough funds in this year's textbook adoption to fund the grade six and seven implementation that we would like to do in September, because that also includes a little bit of what we call Course Three for Grade Eight, the students who will continue from grade seven to grade eight with pre-algebra. So that's what our plans are to implement in September, is grade six and seven, and then continue into grade eight with the pre-algebra students using the new program. The following September of two thousand nine, we plan to implement Grade Eight across the board, Impact Mathematics, and it's called Course Three. So you can see that we've used the balance of this year's money, forty-five thousand dollars, to fund the bulk of this year's adoption with the balance of going into next year's funds. And the next year's funds are already committed, as you can see, with things that we've already brought before you. The Grade Eight Impact Mathematics, the health for grade six through eight that you heard about at the last meeting, and then the six through eight science recommendations that you also heard about. As you know, we just finished a K through twelve science review that was going on this year. So using all of this year's and next year's textbook adoption money, we've almost wiped out that account together with just the recommendations that have come before you. So we'll have a balance of about thirteen thousand dollars in FYO nine, already going into that year with what money has been committed to it. As you know, you have a five-year curriculum adoption cycle. This coming year, we're scheduled to have a couple of things, but in addition to new reviews, out of the math and science reviews that have already been completed, we know that these aren't all the needs that you see noted. So we, we talked at the last meeting about needing to replace the high school chemistry books, simply because they're worn out, it wouldn't be a new adoption. We may need some new books for some of the high school math courses, and we have not yet addressed our elementary science curriculum needs, so you haven't seen any of that yet. We do plan to use some of our school textbook accounts for some of those needs next year, and your curriculum review cycle's coming up, our K through twelve social studies and K through twelve art and music, and seven through twelve business and industrial arts. So while, while some of those may not end up being as heavy on the pocketbook, because ELA and math and science tend to be the more heavy hitters, and we've already been able to purchase some of the social studies needs, you will see some expenses related to those reviews. So we're happy that we can cover what we have requested already for this year and next year's textbook adoption, and using some of our building textbook accounts.
But based on what you have in the pipeline, K through twelve social studies, art and music, seven through twelve business and industrial arts, plus the additional chemistry books and whatever else you said, you're telling us right now that the thirteen thousand six seventy-eight that'll be left on January second of the next fiscal year will be woefully inadequate to cover the rest of your needs for that year?
In some ways, but I think we've talked a lot about, we, we're going to bump the cycle a little bit. So for, for example, next year, there's a K through twelve social studies review, the money will be available in the next fiscal year. So rather than trying to spend the money in the same fiscal year and waiting and waiting for those results, which I found, that's what we were doing this year, is that you're waiting till really, you're holding almost all your money until the last couple of months of the school year when the reviews happen. So we think for this one year, it, it looks, it doesn't look like good news, but if we start the cycle where the finances follow in the next fiscal year, the year, follow the review by one year, then we'll be ready to purchase for July. Now, the disadvantage is, you don't have those materials in teachers' hands before they go home for the summer, but it'll be, it'll be close enough.[1775.63] So that's the discussion that we had going into the future.
Just to pick up on that, I think we'll be able to more clearly articulate what our needs are and then also be able to build what those expense numbers will mean. So we'll be, when we do this, we won't be budgeting a flat $60,000 or as we did for FY09, bumped it up $10,000 more to $70,000 without any rhyme or reason about really what we were buying. Some years that would work, but until we get this curriculum cycle moving in the right direction, the, I think the only downside, as Debbie mentioned, is not having those materials right in teachers' hands, but you know, that we can certainly, as the, as our budgets are passed in May at town meeting, we can certainly get those teed up and ready to go with wherever we're purchasing, cut the purchase order on July 1 and then get that material in as soon as possible. And I think the good news is that we'll know exactly what we're spending in each area each year and we won't be just putting in a number that may work some years and may not work other years.
Well, I guess the part that's confusing to me is that if you don't finish the work until spring and we have to submit a budget by June, January 31st, we're still going to be somewhat guessing at what the number's going to be.
Somewhat, yes, but it's a little bit better than what we're doing now.
Right.
Which is the same figure is put in every year and some years that might be too much. Other years it might be too little, it's not based on.
It hasn't been too much in any of the last number of years.
Right. And it's been just flat, so.
Because we've, we've actually taken out of surplus each of the last several years for an English Language Arts program, a new math program, et cetera. So if you look at what the, what the school committee has funded in, in new, in new books and new curriculum, it is far in excess of what was budgeted in any of the last couple of years.
Right.
And it seems unlikely that in the next several years, as we look at all these reviews, that we're going to be budgeting at lower numbers.
Right. And I think that this, if we're going in this, we are. But if we're going in this direction, I think the, I think having funded most of your major adoptions out of surplus is, has been, you know, great to be able to get those things. But you also don't want to, and here we are in this year where we, where we're budgeted very tightly and realistically and exactly said what we needed and we're going to spend what we need, we don't have that surplus. But that's not, I think that's a better way to budget and I also think that you don't want to have your curriculum needs dependent on whether you have leftover money or not. We need to anticipate it and budget it.
We need to look at this like capital, like we do with computers. And we've sat here and said, we have X number of computers, we want a five-year lifecycle and therefore this is how many we should be replacing every year, and we've built that into the capital budget. It just, several years ago, the committee came to the conclusion, well, didn't come to the conclusion, the committee pushed the former superintendent to put a curriculum program together and to really start updating things. And we found out we had programs, there were books that were out of circulation, lots of different things, which is why we've had to increase the funding so much. So it'll take, it sounds like another year or two to kind of catch up. But then what I think is important is for us to kind of look in a five-year plan like we do with computers and say, realistically, over the next five years, this is what it's going to take to do that. As opposed to, well, we've got 40,000 this year or we've got 50,000 that year. We ought to be, as part of the budget cycle, because it doesn't help us to have teachers with ineffective books or teachers that, where we don't have books for the students. So it's as important to build into the budget as anything else. And I think that if we could look at it on a five-year cycle, it would be help, it would be more helpful in us building a case both from the financial standpoint, but also at town meeting if necessary.
I think, so I think we've started a process that we're doing a little bit better planning.
Yeah.
So, you know, months ago, about a month and a half after I came, we did a whole, we had a whole meeting where department heads coordinators came, we sort of made up a laundry list, but it's frightening when you first look at it. If we scatter that over three years, we can, we can anticipate what the costs are going to be. And we didn't have any method for collecting that information. So whether people had books that were out of date or whether they were just falling apart, we really didn't know about it. So now I, I have the grand laundry list that we know what little needs are, but we, we never had any process for collecting that information that do, you know, what's this going to cost, what's that going to cost? So I think that a little bit more careful planning will help. But to your answer, that I don't think I answered earlier about will we know the results of the review, not really, but because we start reviews in September, by January, when you're tightening up the budget and still moving some things around, by then we do have an idea whether this is going to be a big chunk or whether it's just going to be smaller needs. So we will have a much better idea than we had this year when, as you said, there's an amount there and you just make do with what you can.
Right.
And it's, the two don't really gel too well.
And knowing it was going to be more expensive than less expensive, we threw an extra $10,000 in the line and what's, you know, to go from 60,000 to 70, so.
I, can I ask a question? On the, just to refresh my memory, Debbie, on the Impact Math for Grade Eight.
Yes.
Is that a budget reason that we're stringing them out to '09 or is that an educational reason?
No, it's an educational reason.
Okay. I just needed to have you reconfirm that because if not, I, you know, for $4,300, and would we be better off pushing that or, but I guess the reasons that we can't implement it for this year in grade eight?
It's, it's, it's better to roll in not, sometimes it's better to do all at once, depending on your situation, and sometimes it's better to phase in. In the, in terms of the math review, the people on the review team, which I do concur, felt it would be better to roll in six and seven and then the students, as I said, who are in pre-algebra, can continue in that, but they'll be using the new course. So it'll be a different way, they'll be a little bit more prepared for Algebra I. Whereas the students currently in seventh grade who had pre-algebra using this, the current textbook that we use, are better off continuing with that textbook and methodology before going on. So we thought that was a nice split to implement six, seven and a little bit of grade eight and then next year will be grade eight where the students have already had that course two the year before.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying because I honestly couldn't remember and I wanted to be sure it's for the right reasons.
That was the question.
Because if we wanted, if we wanted to go all at once, these, those books can be purchased July 1st.
No, but it makes sense, there is a rationale and you're very comfortable and confident and that's all we need to know.
I think it's a very wise decision.
I need a motion, please?
To accept this?
To, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Kate made and Martha seconded.
Clarification, the approval is on the fiscal '08 money?
Yeah.
Not fiscal '09 money?
Right.
All right. So let's just make it clear that we're only approving the, recommending the '08.
Fiscal '08.
Fiscal '08 request, which is the forty, forty-five thousand nine hundred and four plus the fourteen oh ninety-six.
Right.
Ah, the fourteen oh ninety-six, the fourteen nine hundred, we've already done this. Right, it's only the forty-five nine oh four.
So we are, we are voting for the forty-five nine oh four.
That is correct.
Correct. All right. Got that? Thank you, Wendy. All those in favor? District Improvement Plan update. Mrs. Spennelli, would you like to address something first, Chris?
I'll frame that again if you'd like.
Okay.
Be happy to. The, as, I know the committee knows well, the public, I hope is aware, we have a district improvement plan that has been developed and adopted and we have spent a couple of administrative meetings and Debbie has led this effort, which is why she's going to explain it in more detail, led this effort to benchmark where we are in each one of these areas and to be able to share with the public. And we'll put this on our website as well so that people have a, an idea of, of the work that's already been accomplished. And then it'll give us a chance, I think, to build on future work next year and the year after. So this has been, I think, a comprehensive look at this by, again, by administrative principals, directors along the way over the last two or three meetings that we've had with our administrative team. So I'll ask Debbie to just review this and give, give the public, committee and the public an update.
Okay. As you know, this district improvement plan was approved by the school committee about a year ago, May 21st, 2007. It is 63 pages long, so those of you at home who want some really wonderful reading, please download it from the website. There are several goals on the district improvement plan. And what I would like to do is just go section by section and focusing on what the goals are and let's start on page 10. So for example, the first goal, math target area number one, is K through six student performance will reflect an increase in the performance index or the comprehensive performance index on the mathematics portion of the MCAS test, allowing the district to meet or exceed state CPI targets. And under each of the goals, for people watching, there are several action steps or strategies listed for the district to accomplish that we believe if we achieve those action steps or complete those action steps, will contribute to the meeting of that goal. So what we did was we added the right-hand column, which is titled Progress as of June 2008. And so for your review, we have the status, those status terminology phrases come from page seven in your district improvement plan. So the assessment of each strategy, the codes are either not initiated, initiated, well underway, near completion, or completed. So each action, action step is evaluated for which of those five assessments would we say we are, you know, in which stage we are at currently. So as you can see, for most of the action steps in math target area one, they're mostly completed or they're well underway. So we're not going to go through each one because we'll be here till next meeting, two weeks from now. So I'll just stop right there and ask if you have any questions about any of them individually.
Just the number six, the professional development for the math specialist, it's not initiated because it's not funded. So my question is, is it because we ran out of money or we decided that was not a good spend or we ran out of time?
I wasn't here, so I'm not sure of the particulars, but this was supposed to occur last summer. It was a specific event last summer and there was some issue with it and it so was not, the decision was made not to send them to that. I, I am working with the math specialist to find another math coaching institute that would be, they could attend.
So not initiated, will it, okay, thank you.
No, I think, I think the, as you see this, it was, the intent was to work with mass insight education and, in a week-long seminar and that never happened. So we, we, we didn't do it. So it's important to put in that, no, we didn't do it. I don't know whose idea it was, but it wasn't an idea that we were embracing, so we didn't do it.
That's all I need to know.
Was this something, Chris, you know, you only started July 1st?
Right.
Was this something that fell through the cracks because it was supposed to happen in early July before you came or did you decide not to do it?
No, I just, I didn't hear about it and so we didn't initiate it. It wasn't something that, and I know mass insight very well, but it wasn't something that, without some further review, that I would have, that I would have initiated in.
Okay. But from a transition standpoint, this was not on a transition list for you to evaluate?
No.
Okay.
So then the bottom line, because we believe the professional develop, regardless, professional development for our math specialist is important, we will figure out another way to meet this goal.
Absolutely. In fact, yes, we already have another idea in mind.
I knew you.
So just put alternate.
Oh, I like that.
But I'm, I'm very pleased that for that goal, the, the district in the year that's gone by has really achieved almost everything that we set out and there were 11 action steps under that. The next, on page 14, the next goal is math target area number two, which is grade seven through 12 student performance will reflect an increase in the performance index or the comprehensive performance index on the math portion of the MCAS test to allow the district to meet or exceed state CPI targets. Additionally, students will demonstrate greater proficiency on AP exams, increasing the average score from a three to a four, and will continue to demonstrate improvement on the SAT tests. And there are 11 specific action steps under that goal as well. And as you can see, most of them have been completed or they are well underway.
Now Deb, are you going to, one of the things that I, I don't see is, so we did all 11 steps. Did it produce the outcome that we had anticipated?
Well, we will know when we get our math MCAS test back in the fall.
So it's not going to be until the fall to know whether or not what we did made.
Yeah, I think that's important, I think that's important, Larry, because when we look at many of these and we see the lab strategy, my progress by comparing test results with other selected districts, and I would include that we would do that against ourselves as well. As you can see, the timeline would be the fall of each year. So we have baseline data that we articulated last fall when MCAS information came out and we, we actually had this discussion as an administrative team. And so now that MCAS is completed for this year, then we will now have to wait until the state sends us the report in September and October and then we'll have another update and be able to benchmark this.
Specific to these?
Correct. My, my only point was this, you encourage people to go to the website to get this. They look at it and it says 2006 to 2011. We're already well into 2008, so therefore, without some additional information, they may think, well then, you know, we're already a year and a half into it, why didn't they measure at least after the first cycle? So my only point is just, we, we ought to think about, and I know you didn't create this, but when, when we were encouraging someone to go off and get a report off the website, we ought to try to look at it with fresh eyes and make sure that they'll have the information they need to assess the data properly without calling, you know, 20 people calling.
To be honest, I think what's going to mislead some people is the 2006.
Right.
Because this wasn't written until last spring, year ago, when it was approved one year ago. I don't know why it says 2006. So I think it gives the impression that we've been working at this a little bit long.
There's some documents we've received that say now 2007 to 212. So what, maybe at the end we can, I think it's a valid point, just as we, this is the first time we've done it. You've done an outstanding job. But from a process point of view, and I think that's what you're getting at, Larry, we need to align in the sand, we're going to ask you, and I asked you last month, but I can't remember, if you could tell us, just like with textbook adoption, what is the right sequence where we want to have you review this, we, we kick it off and then we have our annual review? Is that before our school improvement plans or after? Then we, when do we link it for accountability into our MCAS? So we kind of have that tickler, that two events. And I think then we'll be able to communicate it to parents and we'll know how to display it on the web because there's, it's a work in progress, but now we need to get real crisp with our execution. There are two points of the year or else we're never, it's going to be a rolling document and it'll be wishy-washy. We need to be crisp.
So on page 17, if they look at target for '06, '07, they're going to think, okay, we're well into 2008, why don't I have actual numbers there? So I just think we ought to try to look at it before we put it on the web and invite people to download it, maybe we just take a fresher approach. How do we make it, so if the year, if 2006 is what's confusing, change it. Let's, let's make it so it's easy for the person to read it and understand it so that everybody downloads it, doesn't have to call you with the same question.
I agree because to, to me, that was a little bit confusing because you see, you see that this really just came into effect one year ago.
Right.
But then you look at this, this chart on page 17 they referenced, it says current, 2005 to 6.
Right.
So that's a full school year ahead. I don't, I don't know why.
We just need a line, line in the sand because here's the other thing I noticed. See, Larry, you and I did the drafts, okay? And we've now have a couple of renditions. So the school committee adopted one set, May 21st, 2007, that's what we're given today. But we also adopted by the school committee, one eight oh seven. There's another date that says we did something else in adoption, one eight oh six. So we just need to be crisp. We need to have a timeline for this process so that we're clear. And as it, things get dropped off, we still had that line in the sand, well, that's, it's, it's.
I see what you mean. So pieces of this started earlier, but the specific action steps were really banged out a year ago, so that's, that's why we have a little bit of discrepancy.
Right, right. And this is our first formal review, but we've already done a piece of that with MCAS. So we'll, so it looks like there's a gap in time and I think we can just tighten that up because if, like with textbooks adopt, if there's still a gap, at least we know, is it a six-month gap or is it a three-month gap or it's in sync with our school committee goals and all the other things that we're, we know the timeline of when it will be in sync, the correct sequence.
And I guess what would help me, Deb, is that these were not yours or Chris's steps, okay? What could be confusing to the public in the fall is, okay, so you did everything on this district improvement plan that you said you were going to do and it moved the needle. So before then, it would also be helpful for you and Chris to come back and say, now that we've had a year together, or whatever the time is, we reassessed some of the steps and we're not so sure that we would have done one, three and nine, but two, six and eight were, were right on. And therefore, before we even get the results, it would be helpful to know what steps the new team thinks we need to do differently going forward in order to move the meter. Because you're being held accountable to what someone else laid out as what they thought would move the meter. would move the meter, and if it doesn't, they're not here to hold accountable. So to make it fair from an accountability standpoint, you should get a chance to adjust the action plans going forward.
That's good advice.
And I don't think we ever decided or looked at how this will be a living document moving forward, and that's why we need the sequence, when we start and when we stop, what gets added on, then when we can drop it off so that we know. It's like our school improvement plans. If you look back for three or four years, they said the same thing every single year, even though parents were doing wonderful things and having input, but how do you measure that accountability when they just think, certain things just roll over, and, you know? So I think just to know that on the sequence would be great.
I had a question, actually, and this, I think, is speaking to this timeframe, and that's number seven.
On page?
On page fifteen, which is accelerate the framework implementation, desired level of performance, all grade eight students able to take Algebra I, and the timeline we have is implement by 2011.
Because of the word "all."
Okay.
In other words, right now, we're still going to have some students who are in pre-algebra in grade eight. I don't know if "all," that might be something we might want to revisit, because I don't know if it's realistic to expect 100% of students to be taking Algebra I in grade eight. The vast majority, yes, but "all," I don't, you know, some of the needs of some children, they need a little bit more time with some of those concepts. So that might be.
I think that's tied into what Larry and he are talking about.
Absolutely.
And, you know, whether we have a workshop, or whether you just come back to us, I'd like to know what changes you think going into this next year, we should be making and adopting here. And so if the word "all" becomes 94%, then it becomes 94%. But let's try to make the document more with your imprint than a previous administration's imprint.
I had another question on the following page, on page sixteen, which was number 10, restructure the math support programs, including MCAS tutoring. Again, MCAS pre- and post-test for all students involved in the tutoring, demonstrated gains of at least 10%. Is that data that do we, that we have now? Because that's, we're not waiting for MCAS results, we're, we're looking at what's going on in those MCAS tutoring classes.
That's number 10, on page sixteen. This is for individual students. So for example, when we get individual student data back, how are they making progress in MCAS from one year to the next? And are we, are we getting the right students that need some MCAS preparation?
Okay.
And are they gaining at least, according to this, 10% from the tutoring assessment? So if we give them a little bit of a pre-test, we tend to have our own assessments.
Right.
Then they go through a period of tutoring, are they making the gains leading up to the MCAS that we would hope they're making, from that targeted assistance?
So, okay, from pre to post tutoring assessment, so that post tutoring is after you get the results of the exam?
Well, no, usually it's just before the MCAS. So let's say the tutoring program's going to go on for three months. Usually, there's an assessment before it starts, so we can target the assessment to the tutoring, to the students' needs.
So shouldn't we have that data already, some of that data?
Yes, but they're all individual students, it's not, it's not global, it's a, it's a locally developed assessment, so that we can see if they have needs in the geometry stand versus number sense, versus whatever. So it's really assessments that gear toward the individual students' needs.
So that's ongoing?
Yes. It's not MCAS per se.
Right, I didn't think so.
It's our assessment of what areas of mathematics they need help on.
I was thinking, you could make a determination from a group, but you're saying it's really used individually?
Correct.
Okay.
So moving right along, on page seventeen, you see English Language Arts Goal Statement to Support Meaningful Measurable Change or Result in Making Adequate Yearly Progress for All Foxborough Students, and for the next, is two-year cycles of AYP. And as you can see, from the many different areas of that, if you look at ELA Target Area One on page eighteen, it's for K through six student performance, using those same measures, I don't have to read it every time. And as you can see, most of those are completed, or they're well underway. And those goals go through page 20. We don't have any under that section that are simply initiated, so felt pretty good about the progress in that area. ELA Target Area Two is about grade seven through twelve student performance, using the same measures, and including proficiency on AP exams and improvement on SAT tests at the secondary level. And as you can see from the action steps listed on page 21 and 22, and onto 23, that most of those are completed, or they're near completion. There was only one listed as initiated, which means we know we've started, but we have some work to do. And that was goal, action step number eight, which, which is to expand online resources and tools available to students for practice and reinforcement. We're still looking at a couple of things, some schools like what they have, some are not sure, they might like to try some other things. So we've initiated that, but we may be looking at some other things. On page 25, we have our science target area number one, which is for students in grades five and eight, which are the two grades that take the MCAS science tests to demonstrate steady improvement in their scores in the aggregate on the science portion of the MCAS exam, and there are specific goals listed for that. There are 12 action steps to support that goal. A few are completed, some are initiated, and the reason for that is, if you look at the timelines, this, we just completed our science review. So a lot of these are happening now as a result of the completion of the science review this year.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
And that's very clear, Debbie, but number three and number seven say on the elementary that it was not initiated.
Right.
So is that because we decided it's not appropriate, or we just ran out of time, or ran out of money?
Well, if you see, if you look at the timeline, it's September 2008 to June 2009.
So it's not initiated because the timeline has not occurred?
Right, and we just finished the science review, so now we have a better understanding of what elements your teachers need and want for professional development in science. So we wouldn't have front-loaded that timeline, just to, just to say we provided anything, because that, that goal was for a year from now.
It's like 2B. It seems if not initiated, it sounds like a negative, I mean, it's a negative.
Well, you're right, we could have had A there.
2B initiated.
Well, we could, and some of the others, we put NA.
Right, yeah.
So it's probably NA.
Yes, that's where I, because I clue that in, I didn't, I missed that one.
Debbie, I did have a question, though, just going back, I'm sorry, to the ELA, on page 19, number four, the coordinate the writing program. The timeline is spring 2007, well underway, progress as of June 2008. But we don't have a completion time or a yearly review, is that something that you would want to see in there?
Well, that's a complex process to coordinate and evaluate the writing program, because writing goes across all subject areas, pre-K through 12. So that's, that's, it sounds like a three, it's a three-word action step, coordinate writing program, but it probably deserves like three pages to really explain what that means. And so we do have writing folders, we do certainly look at write, the writing portion of the MCAS, we do surveys from teachers, but we, we know that we, it's well underway, and that we look at those folders, but we could always be doing more work on, in writing, and now we're trying to, for example, we don't have student exemplars, so now that we're looking at writing folders, we'd like to collect examples of what real quality writing looks like in certain subject areas and grade levels, and have teachers be able to compare their actual student work to what we call exemplars, or good examples. So we put "well underway" rather than "completed," because I don't know if that'll ever stay completed.
So the timeline should be different, then?
We can't change the timeline. See, that, we felt, in reviewing this with our administrators, the only thing we could do, this is, this is a district improvement plan that was adopted by the committee, so we, the only thing we did was to add the last column and give you an estimate of where we think we are. But we did not feel we could change any of the content of the district improvement plan. So we certainly will do that as a result of.
But we could, to Larry's point, we could directly do that.
Yes, yes. But, you know, we have that, it is what it is, it says what it says, and we're going to just tell you, based on that, where we are. We did not change, in fact, I had a question about even renumbering, there were a couple of areas where it said, like, one, two, three, four, five, six, six, and I said, you know, can we legally renumber? Because this is an accepted plan that's been adopted. So we decided that renumbering, which was a typo, would probably be acceptable to you. So we did that in two cases.
I thought maybe you just liked six, six, and thought you, you know.
That was a sleeper question. We missed it.
And then, you know, in one, we skipped, in one, we skipped three, so we went one, two, four. So we did make number four, three.
I guess what I'm asking is, I understand that you didn't want to change that, but I think, again, in getting, in having feedback from you now.
Yes.
Those timelines, we probably want to alter.
We would want to look at some of the timelines, it's just that this, we believe in the integrity of the plan, so all we did was give you an update on our progress.
I think what you're hearing now, we're giving you offers.
Thank you, Larry.
And that makes sense, but I, we felt that because we were working through the district improvement plan, that people put so many hours into, that we should at least, and I think we can say.
This is a great first.
I think we can say that we've accomplished quite a bit, if you look at the whole plan in terms of implementation, studying curriculum, looking at implementing new programs, purchasing new programs, doing the professional development to support those programs. So the district has accomplished quite a bit, which I think is, I think is important to note for the committee and for the public.
Thank you. Welcome.
Page 29?
Let's go to page 29, so if you see.
You didn't think I could be fast, did you?
If you see on page 28, this is the social studies goal statement, all students will achieve proficiency in social studies on the MCAS test, beginning in cycle six. So that's, we're, we're in, just about with cycle five now. As you can see, from looking at the timeline, the timeline for most of the action steps for social studies are next year and beyond, because social studies review is next year. So we wouldn't go ahead and start doing things without really having a comprehensive look at what we are doing, and what's working well. But as, some have, nevertheless, have been initiated. So we have taken a look at some of the things, and gotten a little bit of a start in a couple of, of areas.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a suggestion, since we've all had a chance to read this in our pre-package, and, and the lateness of the hour, and the things that we still have to cover, do we need to kind of walk through page by page? Or can we, maybe if there's something that Ms. Vennelli would like to highlight for our attention, she could highlight it, but since we've, we've asked them to kind of update us in a, in a different fashion going forward, it might be more meaningful, that meeting, to spend some more time on the individuals, but we've already read all the action items and where they stand, so.
So if you like to do that, or do any of us? I can wrap up in 30 seconds or less.
Do either of you have any specific questions?
I guess, I do, but we'll leap ahead again.
Yes, okay.
Sorry, Mark.
I'll just do a wrap-up, and then we can move back to the specific question.
That's a great idea, Larry. Why don't we wrap up, and then we can just check?
I do, that's good, Deb.
It gets even a little easier at this point.
Larry, I'm so glad you're in the committee.
The foreign language goal on page 31 is similar to social studies, if you look at the timeline, most of the action steps are for next year and beyond.
That was my question on 33, is that the, is that why it's not initiated?
Yes.
But this is.
Well, no, we don't have any, we cannot compare yet. There are no, there's no foreign language MCAS, so there's not a lot yet to compare when you're looking district to district.
You'll probably change the language when you update this to make a change.
Probably. On page 34, you have a goal about test-taking strategies, most of those are completed, near completion, all well underway, so we've made great progress in that area. Health and wellness, we've talked a lot about it at other meetings, so you already know that some are completed or near completion, and our biggest concern is the health program at the high school, you know that already. On page 40, the athletics goal statement, meeting MIA regulations and requirements, most of those have been completed or have been initiated. On page 42, the fine arts.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
On 38, the investigate expansion of the high school athletic facility, they're not initiated, is this because, or maybe when you update it, it will be tied to the feasibility study, and that's what, when you, so when you update it, you'll make that, you'll, good. Makes sense.
So great progress in athletics. 42, we have, that also, that timeline goes into the future, because next year is our fine arts, art and music review. So some of them have completed, but a lot of them are, the goals and the action steps are waiting to coordinate or sync with that. Okay. On page 47, we have a goal for, for supporting and improving our offerings in business and industrial arts. If you look at the timeline, those are also next year and the year after and beyond. So next year is our business industrial arts review, so that coordinates with that. You have a goal on page 48, that, under the section on student retention, and your first goal is to provide all-day kindergarten. Happy to report, near completion, ready to roll.
Can I just point out, on page 48, the FOIA target area, it says, as of January 29, 2007, the out-of-district enrollment was 362 students? That's not correct, is it? That's a typo. We don't have 362 students in out-of-district enrollment?
No.
Page 48. Maybe you could just check on that, because at 75,000 per year, we're, we're, I did the math, we're in a bit of a problem. Then I checked my math.
I'm just wondering, I don't know where that, obviously, we don't know where that number came from.
You know, 32, I think it's extra six, I think it's 32, but again.
See, they like sixes.
But could it, but could it include, no, I don't think so, could it include private school students?
No, I did the math, you're only up to, you're under 200, 148 and 32.
That's not, that's not correct.
This is out of district.
We will thankfully be revising that. So the kindergarten is great news, as you know, we have another target area for, for alternative work study for recommended high school students, and that is underway. Our goal to attract, retain high-quality teachers and staff, almost all of those four action steps are, are almost completed. And I just want to note in that section, not only they're completed, but those are ongoing, those will continue to happen, because they're very important. And the very last, or almost last, facilities and equipment, most of those are completed or initiated, and they have a lot to do with the MSBA that you've been talking about, so that's so noted. So if it says initiated, as part of the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, it's so indicated. School climate, respect, and diversity, most of those are completed, or they are well underway. And communication and collaboration, most of the goals under, most of the steps of that goal are completed, are well underway. Same with the technology, which is the last. So the only thing under technology, and what, the only thing really under technology that's not well underway or already completed is the phone system. So I, I just thought, as, as we completed this process, and we did the final version of this, I think it's really wonderful how many, how many of these action steps and goals have been addressed or completed or well underway. I think we've made great progress, and I think probably more than I expected to see when we did the final summary.
And if we could just, on the non-initiated, particularly those that were budget-related, I'm sure the phone became, it was priced, we made a decision to allocate dollars on a communication system, and we kept putting money towards that. So yes, we know, at some point, we've got issues around a phone system district-wide, but the cost was just so prohibitive, we didn't even want to price it. So when you update it, I mean, you'll kind of, that either will, you will articulate it differently, or it will become a priority, or whatever, and maybe that's one of the things that we need to put on that capital list and have for our planning session. Yeah, but it was 32 for most of last year, so I have to, you did a marvelous job. And Larry, we did a marvelous job on proofing, so there were a couple things that got by us.
And I think the reason why you're probably pleasantly surprised is when this was put together, Jan didn't do this in a vacuum. She had lots of people throughout the district working on it, and they came up with the goals, and they came up with the measurements, they came up with the dates, and I think it shows that those folks that did that took the ownership and have driven most of it through.
Very good people working here, we're very, very lucky. So they've done a lot of work.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
No.
This is a work in progress. A work in progress. Well done, thank you. Any more questions? All right, bids, go back to Mr. Jackson.
Madam Chairman, on this past Friday, we opened bids for school buses. Two buses were funded with FY08 capital, and two buses were funded with FY09 capital. The FY08 capital funded the purchase of two full-size school buses at $73,835 each, bringing the cost of the two buses to $147,670. We traded in two full-size buses, net trade-in value of $16,000, which meant we need $131,670 to fund the purchase of the two school buses using FY08 CIP funds. This will leave a surplus in the FY08 CIP funds for buses of $3,330. For FY09, we purchased a full-size bus also, $73,835, and a small mini, what I would call a mini wheelchair bus, at $77,445. Total cost at $151,280. We had trade-ins of $13,000, which brings the net cost of the FY09 CIP buses to $138,280, leaving a surplus in the FY09 CIP for school buses of $15,720. So I would recommend the low bidder, the low bid as submitted by New England Transit Sales for three seventy-seven passenger school buses and one twenty-eight passenger wheelchair bus in the total net cost of two hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
All in favor? Five zero zero.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, we opened bids on May fifteenth for our annual electrical service, plumbing service, gas oil burner service, elevator maintenance, fire alarm maintenance, emergency generator service, and HVAC service. And I would also point out that the town utilizes this bid. There was one bidder for electrical service, Richard Brothers, submitted a bid at eighty-five dollars an hour per licensed electrician, sixty-seven dollars per hour for an apprentice. The licensed electrician rate is up five dollars over last year, and the apprentice is up two dollars over last year. Could we have a bid, could we have a, I'd like to make a recommendation that we award to the sole bidder, Richard Brothers.
Second.
Don't we usually go, sometimes you go through them and then we, or do you want, you want us to vote each time?
Well, we didn't get bids on some, that's why.
So you want to keep it separate then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Plumbing service, we received no bid.
So you, yes?
I move key second, so.
So vote, five zero zero.
Thank you. You received no bids for plumbing. For Solotech, which is the gas oil burner service, they were the only vendor. They bid eighty-two dollars an hour for the licensed technician, fifty-eight dollars an hour for the apprentice. These rates were not changed, there was no change on these rates from last year. Recommend that we award Solotech.
Okay, Larry, then, Martha?
Five zeros here.
Five zero zero.
We're making you do it, yeah.
We received two bids, I'm sorry, we received two bids for elevator maintenance and service. Both vendors bid one hundred fifty dollars per hour for a licensed technician and one hundred twenty dollars an hour for the apprentice, and the other vendor was one thirty-five per hour for the apprentice. I would recommend we award to Associated Elevator, the price is stated, and those rates did not change from last year.
Kate, Kate, oh, Martha moves?
Second.
Larry, second.
All right, Katie, we'll take a rest.
Five zero zero.
Fire alarm maintenance and service, we received one bid, home electronic life protection, eighty-five dollars an hour for the licensed technician, forty dollars an hour for the apprentice. These rates did not change from last year's bid. I would recommend home electronic life protection be awarded the bid.
Second. Martha and Katie. Vote?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Emergency generator service, we received one bid from FM Emergency Generator, Inc., ninety dollars per hour for licensed technician. That's a ten dollar an hour increase over last year's rate. They were the only bid. I would recommend we award to FM Emergency Generator, Inc.
Second. Martha, Katie. Five zero zero.
And we do not receive any bids for our HVAC service.
What happens when we receive no bids?
We use the same.
Legally recovered and we use whatever vendor we.
Okay, okay.
We probably need to add the word magician to his middle name.
Thank you.
Mike Magician, all right? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd just remind you that as you're new to this position, we have to notify cable if we're going to go beyond ten o'clock so they can.
No, no, actually, I double-checked with them, we have four hours, not three. So. So we can stay longer.
No, 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 we'll pick up the pace.
That's good news.
I tried, guys.
I'm sorry, I already checked on this. That's good news, yes.
We're going to bring it to conclusion real quick.
Is that it? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for another job, well done. Under other matters, would you like to go, Dr. Morris?
I would.
You can maybe make it mine, Kim.
Just quickly, Kate and I are working on the naming facilities guidelines, that we have some work back and forth that we're doing. And perhaps if we are able to schedule it, we'll be able to bring something to the committee at the next meeting. One issue that came up today, actually some good news, we have nine of our students in spring track who will be competing in the state championship on Saturday. The, the question that we don't know yet, although, and we won't have a meeting to be able to do this, but I would suggest that the school committee approve if we end up with students in the New England championships, because they're in Saco, Maine, they would have to go overnight in order to compete. We think we may have two to four students, either a relay team or a couple of individual performers that may be able to do that, so I'd ask the committee to.
Would you like that motion now?
Yes.
So moved. For an overnight trip.
For an overnight trip.
Overnight trip for the track team, we'll have it. I've talked to Jeff Theodos today, and Kevin Murphy and Buckley will be chaplaining. We'll make sure all of the, all of the requirements are put in place, all the permissions are put in place, so.
Okay. Kate and Martha? All right, vote? Five zero?
Thank you.
Zero. You're all set.
Nothing, Madam Chairman.
It's Slattery.
Yes, I'll try to be very quick. Our last scheduled meeting is on the sixteenth, and I know we have so much that perhaps for our next meeting, we could have just some tentative. We always meet in the summer anyway, so if you could just.
That's on the schedule.
A list, then that would just be helpful for the questions.
It was so long, it was so long tonight, but I have, one of the things I want on the next meeting is the approval of the school committee meetings for next year.
Well, not, we approve for next, well, but I mean, our, our schedule for the summer?
Yes.
Okay, that will be. And the other thing, I'd just like to thank Dr. Morris and Jeff Theodos. And what they're doing with the NIESC, we had the update in April, but as we saw from additional updates and information, they're keeping this in the loop, and I just wanted to thank both of you, because when I look at the, the NIESC letter, it's, it captures the information, and that, those updates are very timely. I'd like to thank you. So we can say, and people are asking us, it's not done in a vacuum, the team is there, and they're working, and it's, they're, they'll meet their goals for two thousand and eleven. And the last item, Madam Chair, I'd like to bring up an issue under the visitor section. I've been here five years. I watched Frank Spillane and others be hammered by a few. I have now sat through, Martha, you did an excellent job as chair, and I've seen you hammered and criticized repeatedly. Then we spent a year, Larry, as chair, doing a hard job, and I've seen him criticized. There is nothing wrong with criticism. Negative feedback can be the greatest act of caring, but may I suggest that some of this criticism is mean, it's nasty, it's, it's not per our policy. And I'd like to see if we could just go back. When somebody is going to go back and hammer an individual again and again, can we just cut it off? Because that's what our policy says. So I think maybe it's time, we seem to get to this point by the end of the year. If I recall, we were in a similar situation this time last year. May I just give my support to you, Madam Chair? Use the gravel and cut it off, because it's, it, when we have visitors, it takes from people, it takes from us, and it's just, it's not helpful to the democratic process.
Particularly, Kate, when they've been told over and over and over, if you're going to have a statement that you're going to read, we want a copy of it. And to act like you've never heard it after you've been told over and over and over is ignorant and rude.
And I've heard you criticized, Martha, I've heard you criticize, and my heart goes out to you. You know, if you had a different opinion with somebody, that's one thing, but they have hammered you again and again and again for the same thing. It is, it is not, it is, it is not productive, and I would like us to say, we're doing, we have too much work and we're getting too much done, and I think zero tolerance, because maybe we have to model that. So it's zero tolerance, and, and I'd say use the gavel.
Well, I think part of it too is by not giving us a copy of what we're, you know, what's going to be presented. Unfortunately, if you saw some of this, then you probably wouldn't allow it, number one. And, and I think some things can be handled on the phone, some things can be handled individually, and I think we're done here, and I'd like to move into a second session.
Thank you for letting me bring that up.
Thank you, Kate, for bringing that up, and I support your suggestion.
Madam Chair? I would like to respond.
No, not tonight, thank you.
I'll second that.
Uh, promotion to go on, all right, we need this by roll call, vote?
It's sad that you hide.
We don't hide.
I'm sorry, oh, aye.
Aye. Chair vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to nothing, we will not be reconvening after the executive.